Please, want to welcome everybody to the August 11th BCC Board Meeting here in beautiful Freeport. For those that didn't want to know why we're here, it's because they're using the main courthouse up there for early voting, and so they've taken up our room. Want to welcome those on Zoom, we got quite a few on there. I don't think I have any elected officials in here. Okay. All right, first off, let's everybody stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Jason, if you mind, please.
Jesus, we thank you for your goodness and your kindness, your sweet love towards us, Lord, we couldn't make it one day without you. We just thank you for being our God and being available at all times. I pray now for this meeting, God, I pray you bless our commissioners, pray you touch their minds and their hearts to make the decisions that would please you and that would promote the Word of God. We just honor you tonight and we give you glory. We ask you to allow your Spirit to invade this place and just let your will be done. We ask it all in Jesus' name, amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all. We'll call the meeting to order. Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Now, we have requests for an addition to the agenda tonight on behalf of Ms. Lee Moore, who is requesting board representation at a Senate Walton Impact 100 Grant Application Presentation. You have her request there, and we would also suggest that if that is something you look favorably on, that you would ask staff to draft a resolution of support for the Chairman's signature so that that can be added to that presentation. Certainly no commitment other than the board is supporting their initiative, there's no financial commitment whatsoever.
Okay.
Then under deletion is a request to delete item number 31, which is the Lafayette Creek Boardwalk Improvements. It's a good process, we're asking to hold that off till the next meeting. Oh, we have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Motion to approve the changes.
Second.
A motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. All right, at this time, it's for public comment on agenda items only. I would like to, in case you haven't been here before, maybe been sometime, each agenda item will have an opportunity for public comment. So unless you got to leave, you got somewhere else you got to go, if you will hold till that time, then we can keep it in the same silo as what we're discussing. Is there any public comment concerning an agenda item? Seeing none, I see none on Zoom, so we'll move on. Is there any items to be removed from the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. I believe the next item up is Waste Management EALs. I acknowledge my conflict of interest, will not vote on this, I've supplied the proper form to the clerk, so what's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in second, any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Okay, Mr. Jones, number 27.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and our first item is our COVID-19 update. Holly's here to share that information with us.
Good afternoon, I almost said good morning, and I'm glad it's the afternoon, it's been another long day, but thank you all for doing your work that you're doing for our community, we appreciate it. Holly Holt, Department of Health here in Walton County. The latest update I have, and I'm going to go back two weeks instead of last week when we were here for the emergency, or not emergency, but an extra board meeting that we had. So, two weeks ago, the total test, and I'm still including Stone Lab, I know every time I come to you, I say it's going to be added to our list, but I definitely have been given some information in the next couple of weeks, we should have those tests included of all the tests that we've done, including Stone Lab. But two weeks ago, with Stone Lab, there were 9,438 tests done. Today, 11,254 tests. Two weeks ago, we had 1,066 positives. Today, 1,428 positives. Two weeks ago, we were at 12% positive. Today, we're at 13% positive. COVID numbers, hospitalization numbers, we have, and this is a report from Sacred Heart, but it basically covers both of the hospitals too, but we have 11 COVID-positive patients in the facility, two are in ICU, one is on the vent, and then there's a total of just 12 patients in ICU there.
Holly, could you repeat the number of ICU patients?
Two, two in ICU that are COVID patients, COVID patients, excuse me, one of those is on the vent. There's a total of 12 individuals in the ICU, two of those are COVID-positive.
So those additional 10 is from other things?
Other things. Still the same age range, zero to 101 years of age. So far, we've tested and there's been a positive, 680 males, 625 females, so it seems to be targeting more males than females, so that has not changed. When we first started, it was more females than males, but in the last couple of months, it changed with those statistics. We have had, and as today, there was a question about the amount of deaths because sometimes we get the information before what is reported on the dashboard, so as of today, we have had 16 deaths. Two weeks ago, we had 12 deaths by the end of that day. I guess the additional deaths have been one more, two more from some long-term care facilities, and then the other ones are community spread acquired deaths. For Florida, the total positive cases as of today, 542,792. Total state deaths, 8,553. That's the information I have today, unless anybody has questions.
Okay. Holly, went on the Department of Health dashboard.
Right.
And I pulled up Walton County, and I pulled up the state and the metrics part of it, and it's showing a decline. Do you agree with that?
There is a decline for the positives, our State Surgeon General spoke yesterday and told us, I believe, it's 8% statewide.
Right.
And for us, we're hovering around that 12%, 13%. But I have seen a few go down in the last few days, and we are continuing to test as much as we have been.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
I do. Holly, I just want to make sure that, I'm seeing some emails and people are concerned that the flu is being tracked separately, is that correct?
That's correct.
None of these numbers include the flu?
No, no ma'am.
And do you have any stats on the flu?
Yes, I went ahead, Commissioner Nipper had mentioned a few things about flu, so I wanted to give you a little bit of information about that, went ahead and researched, I don't know if you know this or not, but the flu is not a reportable disease. So it's very hard sometimes to get information, except for the state of Florida, there's a couple ways to obtain that information. One is through the emergency department, when they come through, those are reported. Also, you're getting it through the lab, so when the lab tests and it's positive, so let me just give you some updated information about influenza. And so when we pulled the data, we pulled from August of last year until now, so basically it's August 1 of 2019 to August 8 of 2020. So so far, for this last year, we have had 353 positive influenza tests, 1,869 negative influenza tests, which gives us a positivity rate, and this is for Walton County specifically, 15.89% positive. And then there's a breakdown between all the different types of flu types, which I don't feel like that's probably what you need today, so that's the information that I do have.
Right, and is...
Go ahead, Commissioner Nipper, finish up, go ahead.
Is SARS, and there's another, is that also a flu, and then is that trackable? Are they keeping numbers on SARS and other ones? And we're tracking COVID so precisely, and yet you're saying the flu isn't trackable?
The flu is only trackable through the emergency department and the lab, but it's not a reportable disease. We have a reportable disease list that we go by, COVID, of course, is on there, it's a reportable disease. The SARS-CoV, which is part of COVID, that's reportable, and I believe MERS is on there too, but there's a lot of reportable diseases that we do keep up with, you know, HIV, TB, some of those things.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is death rates reported with flu in your report?
Okay, so, good question, only pediatric death rates.
Only pediatric?
Only pediatric death rates are reported, and there's various reasons for that, I think we talked about this one time with COVID, you know, it could be one of the diagnosis. So where the flu is concerned, it could be one of the diagnoses, sometimes they don't know that the person tested positive for the flu until after they passed away. So there's various reasons for that, that I know on the Department of Health website, it tells exactly why those things are not reported for an adult, but they are for pediatrics. We've had zero pediatric deaths in this last reportable year that I just talked about.
Do you have any numbers, are you through, Mr. Nick?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Do you have any numbers for flu for last year?
Well, the report I just mentioned was from August to August.
Do you have any for the year before, then?
No, not on me today, but I can get that for you.
All right, I'd like to see those numbers. It still bothers me that we have all the numbers of tests positive, and we have no numbers on people that have tested positive, but they don't test positive today. So it makes us look like that we've got, what was it?
1,400.
That's our number right now for...
Our number right now is 1,428.
Right, okay, that's what I had written down, but I wanted to make sure. So it looks like that we have 1,428 cases of COVID. We have nobody with, not even one person in the statistics that says they've had COVID and they no longer have COVID. To me, that makes this whole thing very misleading. I am concerned that, listen, I think it, I'm wearing a mask, I think it's a serious situation. I don't, I'm not telling anybody else to wear a mask, that's their business, but what I'm concerned about is this has turned more into a political issue than a health issue. And I think that, that I think that we need to get somehow, and I know we've sent, you know, a letter, a resolution to the governor, asking for help on some of these problems we're having with figuring out, it's just insane to me that we don't have a number of people that don't have the virus anymore. We've got 1,428 cases that have tested positive and zero that have said they're not, they don't have it anymore. And I'm not blaming you, I know that's not your fault, because you and I have discussed this, so we're blue in the face, but I also question, a friend of mine told me, so this is not scientific evidence.
Okay.
But he told me that his friend went to a COVID test, filled out the paperwork, the line was too long, he got frustrated and left. Several days later, he got a letter that said he tested positive for a COVID test he never took, and that's troubling to me, I just, I would like, and I know, Holly, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
And I'm not, not, not anything to do with the Health Department, but somebody has got to have a number to say, we had 1,428, but now we only have 99 that are actually tested positive right this minute. I mean, if it's true, within 14 days, basically, I know the numbers fluctuate, but you're either cured or dead, and this has been going on since February, and we have zero cases that are cured, as far as the statistics go, and it, that, I'm getting a little passionate, I don't mean that to bet you.
That's okay, I get passionate too.
I just, it just, it just drives me crazy that when you look at the numbers statewide, we've got people that have tested positive in the...
The mix.
You know, and they're well now.
Right.
Got them in the room.
Yeah, I know that, I just looked at one of them, but the thing is, you've got people that are positive, but there's no number for that, and I don't think anybody's concerned about that but Tony Anderson. It bothers me that we spout out these numbers, and that's all the numbers we have, so again, you're doing your job, but we have these numbers, and everybody's going, oh my God, we got 1,428 that tested positive, but what if that number is really only 28 that are sick right now, or 48, or 148, instead of 1,428? It's frightening to walk around when there's 1,428 people in Walton County that has this disease, but there's really not 1,428, you know what I'm saying?
Oh sure, and I think that's what we have to look at, yes, that is a number, 1,428, but we all know, there's not 1,428 people that still have COVID. Now, it's an evolving process, and we know with COVID, we learn something every day. Do we know the real true percent of how many are recovered? No, we do not.
I know there's one that's recovered.
So...
And that person, I'm not going to say is male or female, but they're in this room.
Right, right.
Ms. Holly, before you answer that.
Okay.
That's one thing we've asked...
The governor.
Get the governor and others to try to give us what is recovery.
Right.
And nobody seems to know or is willing to give any definition, but you go on the dashboard, and you look at the United States, there's that one tab over there for that, they show a recovery rate.
Recovery rate.
But you go into Florida, you don't know nothing, as far as that's concerned, and I don't know, probably never going to get anything out of Tallahassee to give us that definition, but agree, you've got 1,400 and some people, they tested positive, but we only had, I can't find my thing there, but we only had 60-something, and one time it was in the hospital, and they're not there now.
And it affects everybody in a different way, which we all know that, you know, it's horrible that it affects some people with the death rate, I mean, you know, we've had people, we had, I don't know if you all are aware of this, we had one of our employees pass away two weeks ago at the Health Department, so it has hit us tremendously there, and I can honestly say through contract tracing, that did not come through an internal situation, it was an external situation. So we are very passionate about this, every time I get in my work car, I think of that individual. So, you know, we all totally understand, and I understand what you need and what you want, what you all did as a board to send that resolution up was perfect, because it should go all the way up to the top. I continue to communicate to who I can communicate with about what the needs are for Walton County, and I have communicated that several times over several conference calls. So for that to come back, it, you know, it does go up, and then it can eventually come back down, but I think we need to also look at the last two weeks, how many we actually have had positive, the amount of tests that we've actually, we've tested, because you still have people here that aren't testing that are positive, they're asymptomatic, they don't have a clue that they've got COVID, so that we know is still, is going on in this community, and with schools opening up next week, we're going to see more, because we've got kids together and things like that, that's just normal, it's just like any type of gathering, you're going to see more as we move forward, but asymptomatic thing is really huge, because we don't really know who has it unless they're tested.
Well, you know, most of you here know my feelings of lawyers, our lawyers are excluded from that, but I can't wait to, I could see this happening in the future in a murder trial, and the lawyer says, Your Honor, my client didn't kill him, he had COVID, he died of COVID. So, I mean, if we're catching, if we're counting somebody that was killed in a car wreck as a COVID patient because they tested positive after they were dead for having COVID, they were asymptomatic, but they count as a COVID death and a bus ran over, what's to say, hey, I murdered, that guy was murdered, but he died of COVID, so we have to let this guy off? And I know that's way out there on the rim, but that's, that's the crazy thing about these numbers, that is just frustrating all of us, all of us that have to make decisions for Walton County, or just, you know, and you've fought for us, Holly, and I appreciate that, to get these numbers, but to get the numbers of how many don't have it, but it's just frustrating as all get out that there's no cure rate, okay, we're at 13%. I wonder out of that 13%, how many of them don't have, don't have COVID right now, you know? What if we only have a half a percent that have active COVID right now? It's just, I mean, it's, it's very frustrating.
All right, any other questions for Holly?
What's the average recovery rate for COVID? What's, on the average?
14 days is when you're allowed to go back, basically, there's some more guidelines from the CDC, but 14 days is what the general rule is for recovery.
Mr. Recovery rate for the, just say the next 30 days, when you come back, what do we test the last 30 days?
I could tell, we might could go through, I mean, these numbers have gotten huge, I'm just going to tell you, we started, you know, with a few, and now we're up to 1,428 positives, and we can go back through and look to see out of those, how many are past 14 days, but I will tell you this, there are people that are still testing positive for COVID, okay, so you've got that definition, so you've got various definitions. You've got somebody that has tested positive for COVID, and they go back two weeks later and retested they're negative, and you've got other people that are still testing positive, even though what we have learned is after the 14 days, or the viral load is probably, is probably, because we're still learning all this, down to where they're not contagious, they're not communicable, because their viral load is lowering, but they're still testing positive for COVID, that has happened with some of the individuals that we have been dealing with.
Okay.
So it's very hard to...
Can I ask you a question about that?
Yes.
And I don't mean to interrupt.
You did.
I know, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'm just, I get really passionate about this, and Holly, again, I know how hard you're doing, how hard you're working, how hard you're trying to get the numbers we're asking about, but if I have COVID, if I test positive, and I go in quarantine for 14 days, I'm perfectly fine, I don't, I don't have any symptoms or anything, I come out and I test positive again, does that count as another positive case?
No, you're one case.
Okay.
If you test one time, you're a case, you could test 20,000 times, but the first time you're a case, that goes into our numbers.
Okay.
After that, no.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, one quick one. The bottom line is, two weeks ago, we were running 30 or 35, 40 positives a day, it looks like the last week, we've been under 20.
Yes.
Day was like 14, so I deduce from that that things are getting better, is that fair?
It looks like a downward trend, or we're kind of stabilizing right this minute.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, one more, what age for children should be wearing masks, or should not be wearing masks?
Well, I think the CDC says, they're looking at six and over, and then I know if the child has some respiratory issues, those are things you need to be careful, they're a vulnerable population because of other risk factors, but around six and up.
All right, thank you.
Chairman.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I just, all right, you said, you said, and I may have heard this wrong, so you said, if somebody has, if a child has, say, lung problems, should they wear a mask more, or wear what mask less?
Take, just think about a child that has asthma, they may have difficulty breathing, it's just like an adult or anybody else, you put a mask on them, it causes maybe some shortness of breath, those are the ones you want to watch out for and not wear a mask if possible, unless, you know, it's been approved by their physician, or, you know, their parents are good with it, or, you know, whatever, but need to be careful with that with a child.
So I'm standing up here wearing a mask, and I wear masks out, I don't wear them when I'm outside, but I do if I go into a building. I'm around a lot of people, I don't, I don't want somebody to come back and say, hey, you're the one that gave me COVID, but that's my choice, I'm not saying everybody else has to want marijuana, that's my personal choice. But, again, in my brain, I have a question of, am I breathing in carbon dioxide by not having it go out into air? And I've heard the CDC say we need masks, I've heard them say we don't need masks, and again, we do need masks, but I'll be honest with you, I don't like doing this, I don't, I'm sweating, and I'm, you know, I'm not breathing really good, and if I'm not getting all my carbon dioxide out, I'm killing trees beside that.
Right.
So, you know, I mean, is it really necessary to wear a mask?
Well, we encourage everybody, this is the thing, when you wear a mask, you wear a mask if you cannot stay socially distanced, that is the key to it. If you can say, stay socially distanced, then you might think twice about it, but for some people, they're going to wear a mask because, you know, they don't know if they're staying six feet, you know, and me too, I'm going to wear my mask because I don't know that I'm actually staying six feet socially distanced with somebody, and remember what a contact is, it is six feet or greater, excuse me, six feet or less, 15 minutes or greater, that's considered a contact to you. So if you're just breezing through somewhere, you know, going in, coming out, and you're not going to be around a lot of people, those are things to think about, but socially distance is the key, a mask is very highly encouraged, because a lot of people don't know that they're not staying that six feet, so that's, that would be what I would say to you.
What about my carbon dioxide question?
I can't really answer that question.
Okay, well, so, being that I know not many people can stand to be around me closer than, closest than six feet for more than 15 minutes, I'm okay then.
Right, and I would tell you this, I would tell you if you're feeling funny because of the mask, you need to talk to your doctor about it, that's what I would tell you to do.
Well, I just, I have had that thought about carbon dioxide, you know, because sometimes I feel like the air is not getting out.
Okay.
That's maybe just been in my mind.
Bring this thing in for a landing.
Okay.
All right, anything else, Holly? All right, I ain't going to ask you if you got anything else, but anyway, all right, well, that takes care of that update, Les, Mr. Jones, you got something?
Just a reminder that may help some in the public that are listening, at our last meeting, we presented to you, and you kindly approved the ability to use some CARES Act funding for nonprofits, just want to let those folks know, and if you're listening or here, and you know of any nonprofits that would like to follow up on that, the application information they need is on the homepage of our county webpage, so it's very easy, very accessible, but, you know, we'll certainly entertain any questions anyone has, but we're But we're trying to make it as easy as we can to get through that process.
Okay.
And I believe there are a couple of, I think Heather has the next item.
Well, let me hang on a minute. I know there's a lot of people out there who've come to talk about the mask, but, but I was hoping I can hold y'all until we get to the resolution, and then we'll take your public comment. Okay? All right.
Okay, Chairman, the next item on the agenda is the request consideration and approval of the extension of the COVID-19 local state of emergency resolution. And on this, I would ask for one change. The resolution that's in your book references August 4th through 11th. That was last week. It should be the reference to August 11th through 18th. So if you make a motion, I would ask that you include that the date August 4th be exchanged to August the 11th, and any references to August the 11th be August the 18th.
Okay.
Thank you.
entertain a motion?
So moved.
With those?
With those changes, yes.
Those changes, okay.
Duck it.
I've got a second. Any public comment? Yes, sir. Remind everybody, haven't been up here before, when you come up and introduce yourselves, spell your last name, sure the clerk will have the record.
My name is Carl Hawkowitz, H-A-U-Q-U-I-T-Z.
Go ahead.
And after what I just heard, I don't understand why we have an emergency. I mean, she's just telling us that we don't have, we don't have any idea how many people have COVID. We have a good idea. It's not what they say. And as I look back on the last 14 days, there's only been 560, about 560 new cases. Well, it's only last 14 days. That's 560 cases. CDC says one in six end up in the hospital. That's 93 cases. Do we have 93 cases in the hospital? Nope. Of those six, 10% will die. That's nine dead in two weeks. Do we have nine dead? No. So what's our COVID emergency now? It's going down. We don't even know what the numbers are. How can we have emergency? We don't even understand what we have an emergency for.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else? Okay, what's more, should we have a motion and second on the floor? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. And Carl, for your benefit, it, the state of emergency allows the county, in the event we have a major uptick or whatever, to go ahead and continue to use our emergency powers to take care of whatever may come from that. And that includes funding if there is some available to us during this operation. So that's, that's one of the primary reasons it's still there. And I have a tendency to agree with you as far as your numbers and your analysis. However, I want to, I don't want the county be in a position where all of a sudden I gotta scramble to find the commissioners so we can go back into emergency session. So we just continue this on down the road, and that's primarily the reason for it. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, to add to that, the, I believe Bay County and those counties to the east are still under a local state of emergency from Hurricane Michael that was three years ago. That just, it's just government. Bear with us.
Okay. Number 29 has to deal with the mask resolution. I assume everybody's had a opportunity to read it. It's been on the website. I've gotten a few emails. I want to go ahead and just put this out on the table. I've gotten a few emails from folks saying that we're mandating a mask through this resolution. We are not mandating it. Don't let that, please understand that. Everything we doing there is encouraging people to do it. It's no different than Walmart, Publix, or anybody else. They took it upon themselves to limit people coming in with, with a mask. They have to have a mask. Now, if they come up and say, "I've got a medical issue," they can't force them and they can't inquire beyond that because of the HEPA. So this is just an encouragement to, when you can't social distance, to consider wearing a mask if you so fit. All right. Heather, you want to go over that?
Yes, Chairman, the directive at the last meeting was to ask, have my office drop a resolution encouraging people to wear face masks. This resolution does just that. It recognizes there is a serious threat to public health via COVID. And the relevant provisions are that every person, living, working, visiting Walton County is encouraged, when social distancing is not possible, to wear a face mask in any public location. And then the second thing that it does is it encourages businesses to post their businesses with their policy regarding whether their patrons are to wear masks or not wear masks. And that's up to the businesses. But again, those are both encouragements only and not mandates.
Okay. I know there's several out there I talked to earlier before the meeting started that wish to make a comment. And I, I would ask if there's, if one gets up and the other one coming up wants to say the same thing, just say ditto, you know? And that way, we can keep this thing moving. All right, so.
Before we do that, can we?
Make a motion?
Well, I'll make a motion, but I, on the Section 2B, about the middle of the first sentence, it says, "Direct." Direct implies that there's some sort of duty.
Yeah, mandate.
So I would, I would like to strike the word "direct."
You got it.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we accept the resolution, but I want to strike the word "direct" in that, oh, Section 2B, the sixth word over.
Would you like, would you like to replace it with "ask" or something a little bit less?
All businesses are encouraged to ask invitees. So actually, we strike "direct business" and say, "Encouraged to ask invitees."
I'd like to second for discussion.
Go ahead.
I, I think, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Should we add the six-year-old for kids? I don't know how much we're gonna break this down. If we need to, we got CDC guidelines, but I know Mr. LaSalle is here, and I've got his email up, and I just want to make sure that we're, we are addressing without restricting. I just wanted to put it out there.
I, I would, I have no problem with adding that language except, I mean, I have no problem with adding that language. I would say that this entire thing is just a recommendation, encouragement. There's no, I, I want to make sure that everyone understands there's no direction or mandate.
All right, so.
That's what you want, if you want to add that, that's fine with me.
I can provide suggested language that I think that would do the job and not change this very much. If you'd like, I can tell you right now, the thought I would have would be at the very end of Section 2, Item A, where it says, "To wear face covering in any public location." To add the language and otherwise follow all CDC guidelines.
I think that would, that, that works for me.
That works for me.
Or other CDC guidelines. This is Section 2, Item A, the very end of the sentence, add language that says, "And otherwise follow other CDC guidelines."
I'll amend the motion to that.
Okay, we got a motion, a second. All right. I think I'll hold off on that, my comment for now. All right. All right, I'm gonna open it up for public comment. So if you want to make a comment and reference this, you see the clock up here, please adhere to the time. Just to introduce yourself and spell your last name for the clerk. Okay, who wants to raise their hand? Come on. Okay, everybody, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start on the wall and go that way, and then come down this row here, okay? And like I said, if the person ahead of you says the same thing you was gonna say, please, just acknowledge that, please.
My name's Emily Weaver, W-E-V-E-R. Prior to the July 4th Board of County Commissioners meeting, Samantha Herring from Seaside requested that a mask mandate make it on the July 14th agenda. During that meeting, there was much back and forth about masks. But perhaps most importantly, and this can be found on page eight, nine of that meeting's minutes, Mr. Chapman thanked Seaside community for the precautions they are taking to combat COVID-19 and requiring their customers to wear masks inside the businesses. He encouraged other businesses to follow Seaside's example. However, that mass decision, discussion didn't end there and was pushed to the July 28th meeting. I and others attended that meeting as we feared a mask mandate was a possibility in Walton County and felt for various strong reasons that was not acceptable, and shared those with you then. And I left that meeting grateful. I was like, huh, I don't have to choose between breaking the law and putting my staff's health at risk. I was grateful when I left that meeting. But then, on the way home, someone called in at the last second, and here we are, discussing masks yet again in the form of a resolution. Here's the issue. Mr. Chapman, you've already said everything that's in this resolution on July 14th, and it wasn't enough. So here we are again, discussing this official resolution. And I don't know what makes the way, I don't know why this board thinks that's gonna solve the problem. When this is over and you guys vote or don't vote, at the end of this meeting, come public comment time, it's gonna be back up. We're all gonna be here to have another long Board of Commissioners meeting again next two weeks. The news channels that were here, that were present at the July 28th meeting have said nothing about this resolution. They only mentioned that y'all wouldn't pass the mandate. Public media is abuzz with complaints and frenzied hysterics that this board will not pass a mandate, even though they've all known like me since July 28th that this resolution was a possibility. I appreciate your effort to appease both sides, but with no appreciation from mandatory mask team about meeting in the middle, I do not believe you will achieve the results you were hoping for, and the many emails and calls you are receiving will continue on. It's my ask that you make a motion to table mandatory mask thing, table the resolution, table the mask ordeal altogether. Make a statement today. The CDC has made recommendations. The Surgeon General has made recommendations, and there's no need to hear it regurgitated from the Board of County Commissioners in Walton County. If you won't table it today, if you won't make a motion to table this, we don't have to hear this ever again, then I ask that you, under Section 2, create a Section C in habit state. Local residents and businesses owners should be advised that this resolution is a recommendation, not a mandate, and is not enforceable by law or punitive fines. Please make a motion to table this.
Thank you. All right. Yes, ma'am.
Mallory Fields, M-A-L-L-O-R-Y-F-I-E-L-D-S. Commissioners, here we stand again, defending our freedom and personal liberties against the slippery slope of mask mandates and resolutions. Although the term "resolution" seems accommodating, non-threatening, and appeasing, I assure you, to those of us who stand before you defending our freedom, it is not. The very definition of the word "resolution" means to take a firm stance to do or not to do something. Note the words "firm stance." Furthermore, may I remind you the definition of tyranny? Tyranny means oppressive government rule. What about the definition of the word oppressive? Difficult to cope with, causing hardship and depressed spirits? How many of us wearing masks could claim that to be true? Difficult, hard to cope with, depressing? Show of hands?
Aye.
I know you get the point of where I'm going, but do you see my point? When you took an oath to defend our people of Walton County, you promised to defend our freedoms. Does creating a resolution to wear a mask breach the promises and the defenses of our liberties mentioned above? Yes, yes, it does. Therefore, you are violating the very oath you took. Let's not get carried away with accommodating the language of pro-maskers. The end game for them is not a resolution. They want a mandate, and this puts them one step closer. Our health is our responsibility, nobody else's. Those who believe that others should wear a mask for their own safety are imposing unfair responsibility, blame, guilt, and fear. I believe, Commissioners, that your stance should be one where you promote each person being accountable for themselves and having the choice to handle their health as they see fit. We all know blaming is a slippery slope, one in which is never fully appeased. Lastly, if safety is a major contender for your consideration for mask resolution, then you would be wise to consider the damaging health effects of mask use. Earlier this week, a man who was standing in line in front of me with his mask pulled up, tightly covering his face in protection, of course, fainted. That's right, he fainted. In fact, I was there and helped catch his fall and protect his head from hitting the floor. Why do you think he fainted? No other reason than lack of oxygen, of course. All of us who witnessed this were asked to give an incident report, and we all agreed the mask was the culprit. This is not the only story. I am sure you have heard as many workers in our community complain of dizziness, headaches, becoming winded from not being able to breathe, and so on. Walton County is not in a state of emergency. To label it as such is false. But I would argue that the health of our community is in crisis, and it's not because of COVID. It is the hardship, the division, the harassment, the mandates, the oppressive job conditions, all in part because of mask use. These two should be your concerns, Commissioners. May you stand for freedom, our choice, our liberty, and for the oath you promised us. I request a motion to table mask mandates and resolutions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. There in the back, please, a, yes, ma'am, dressed in the black, come on forward, please.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Hannah Fields, F-I-E-L-D-S. This is the third council meeting that I have attended to address the mask issue. As I mentioned earlier, I'm originally from New Zealand, with half of my family living in Australia. Both of these countries started by masking their citizens and are now detaining them. I am in the process of advocating outdoor exercise for the occupants of high-rise concentration camps in Australia. This is why we must defend the Constitution at all costs. By defending it, we are defending our country, our families, our future, and the American dream. This is not China or Soviet Union. So why are you allowing our civil liberties to be trampled and stolen from the citizens you have sworn to serve? Is it not enough that 95% of stores require masks, that you insist that my children and I wear them outdoors also? Is it not enough that people like myself, who cannot wear a mask due to disability, are constantly being discriminated against? On Thursday, my husband was harassed and verbally assaulted in a local store for not wearing a mask. He was never asked about his condition or asked to leave. He was so concerned by the behavior, he called the sheriff. The sheriff simply said, "They're allowed to kick you out." Is this an appropriate response from law enforcement who's employed to protect us? How will you rectify this in the future, and how many people have experienced the same thing? I was verbally assaulted last month at the soccer field in front of my three young children. According to these people, I was not socially distanced enough. I was more than 10 feet away. Social distancing and masks are tearing our community apart. Civil liberties are being violated every day. Fear, panic, physical and verbal altercations are becoming the norm. It is a terrifying experience to simply go to the grocery store. Many Walton County parents like myself are choosing to homeschool their children this year, not out of fear of the virus, but because we see the impact that social distancing and masks have had on our community. I don't want my kids to suffer the physical and psychological harm of having to wear a mask every day. As Walton County Commissioners, you know that no business can create a policy that violates established law, period. No executive order can violate or suspend established law. No state of local emergency can violate established law. When will we educate the businesses, the politicians, and the law enforcement? There's absolutely no scientific evidence to prove that masks prevent COVID. In fact, masks are causing severe health issues for people, such as pneumonia and lung collapse. I understand that the county hospitals and medical professionals are receiving COVID funding by calling this a local state of emergency, even though it isn't. I want you to know that I care about my family and the people in this community. I care about their health, their freedom, their futures, and living a peaceable life. Social distancing, masks, violence, harassment, assault, and law enforcement not doing their jobs is unacceptable. Commissioners, you have the legal authority, power, and duty to terminate or motion to table today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the row right here, start at the back and work our way forward. If there's anybody in that row wish to speak, starting in the back. Okay.
J. Fields, J-A-Y-F-I-E-L-D-S. This is what you wear for infectious disease. I work in that type of industry, and you also need a respirator that covers your whole face. I don't have that today because we're using it at a job. So is this what we're gonna require? I also have a, the carbon monoxide tester right here. When it gets to, I'm gonna read you some OSHA stuff right now. Above 1,000 cognitive performance, decision-making, problem-solving, speed of addition is negatively affected. Above 10,000, increased respiratory rate, respiratory acidosis, and medical metabolic stress. I'm gonna do the tests so you can watch what it does. When it gets, when it gets to 10,000, it goes to all zeros. So watch when I start to talk. It starts to go up because I'm talking, I'm using my breath back and forth. I can't see what it said, but you guys again. Also, there's humidity there. It goes up to 99%. And what happens is that's a breeding ground. It's a breeding ground for, it's a breeding ground for all types of germs. So this is what exactly happens right there.
2791.
So we need to stop this. We won't comply. I won't comply. I was the one that was, I was the one that was... I was the one that was verbally assaulted at the Walmart, and I'm tired of this going on. We need to stop this, we need to stop this now. I have family in a quarantine camp in Australia, and it's unacceptable. It's getting harder for me to breathe as this, these masks do not work. I don't know, when are we going to stop this? What's it at now?
3510.
We got to stop this, you guys. It's unacceptable, we're becoming a communist country.
You made your point, why don't you move on and finish out your comments?
I'm done.
Okay.
Me again, Carl Hawke, H.A.U.Q.U.I.T.Z. County mask, not even a mandate, but a recommendation is a bad idea for several reasons. One, the masks are not proven. Even the N95, the vaulted N95 mask, everybody loves, is not rated for biological agents. If you don't believe that, take that mask, put it on, go into an automobile paint shop when they're painting solvents, see how long you last before you pass out, right? It just doesn't do it. Even hospital surgeons, they wear masks not to protect them from their patients, but to protect the patients from them, so their breath doesn't go into the patient. The mask doesn't help the doctor at all. I know you don't have any kind of consequences now for not wearing a mask, so I don't understand why we didn't have a resolution for it. There are also risks for wearing masks. You have a significant amount of CO2 that you rebreath again, and that can cause pleurisy, which is a serious infection in lungs that you do not recover from. The Pan and South Korea have determined the transmission of COVID virus requires three Cs. Confined spaces, crowded spaces, and close contact. Fleeting encounters on a sidewalk, parks, public parks, shopping aisles do not result in transmission. And that's exactly what she said. Also, the World Health Organization has defined social distancing as three feet, not six Let's look at the need. Do we need something like this? Walton County has a population of about 75,000 people. From February until now, there's only been 15 deaths, I think you said 16 now, maybe, right? But they're only related to COVID virus. They didn't, some of them are a real stretch. They didn't die because of the virus. They died, but it's related to COVID virus. Also, we have, I have 1,383 cases, I'm a little behind in time, and that includes the deaths. Whatever that number, we don't have it to be sick people. There's a large number of people who test positive to a flawed test. I say flawed because there's a large number of asymptomatic cases. She says they'll get sick sooner or later, but they don't, and they don't pass it on. Typhoid Mary is an extremely rare thing in diseases, one in millions, not one in hundreds. No one really knows how many cases of COVID virus are in this county, country, state, anywhere, because it's imperfect counting, the test is imperfect, nobody really knows. I find it wrong to pass ordinances that affect all of our citizens, and we don't know the extent of the problem, we have no reliable evidence or a solution is even effective. Leave it to the people to take care of themselves.
Thank you. All right. Second one behind the guy in the front row. You didn't want to speak, okay, sir in the front row, you want to speak?
In recent weeks, I've had two clients tell me that they're coming here to flee the police state communities because Walton County feels like America. So why would we want to ever threaten that? What specific statistical data does the board have that proves that public mask wearing stops the spread of coronavirus? We can stand here all day and argue the effectiveness of masks, and the board has been presented with scientific studies that show that masks are ineffective against the coronavirus and can sicken people. You know the negative side effects, but that's not what this is about today. This is about the government overstepping into people's lives and telling them how to run their businesses, what they will require from customers, just so that they can have customers. This is about the government telling people what they will wear when they leave their house. As our local government, you aren't called upon to do anything just to do something. You are called upon to do the right thing, according to our Constitution, our Bill of Rights, and the oath that you took to uphold freedom and democracy even in crisis. Yet, we are here talking about this in ways that you can circumvent freedom and democracy and coerce businesses and people to set policies that discriminate. We live in Florida. Do we require sunscreen for anyone that steps outside or on the beach? Of course, we all know that skin cancer is very deadly. Are we prepared, as county officials, to bear the responsibility of health consequences of mask sickness for those that follow this resolution? Infections, accidents, workers comp. The word "resolution" means verdict. Will this be the verdict of this commission? Will this be the legacy mask wearing in Walton County? Then why would you inflict a resolution on 99% of a healthy population that has greater statistical evidence to sicken them? If you can't prove the effectiveness of masks and you personally don't support a mandate, then why would we pass a resolution that reads as a mandate? The ones pushing you to do this demand you to virtue signal for reasons that bear no statistical evidence that masks actually work. Are we satisfied to embolden demands from a small faction who will call for mandates or closures next because we walked up to the line, but we didn't cross it? Are we okay with demanding you to break your oath and to overstep boundaries into the personal lives of your constituents? Do you not see that by granting credence to them, by any such resolution, you continue to invite this back into your sessions and into your county? You cannot stand for everything, or you stand for nothing. Sometimes, the best resolution is to not render one. Coronavirus will die off, but so could individual freedom and civil liberty if we don't protect it. Once we use the government to infringe on the liberty of people, people suffer. I wish you the courage to stand strong for democracy and freedom in the face of a passing storm. Request motion to table.
Thank you. All right, we'll start over here with the lady in the black with the white polka dots, you want to speak? And then we'll go up that row and then back down over here. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Tammy Molnar.
Hold the mic down, there you go.
Thank you. Good afternoon, my name is Tammy Molnar, M-O-L-N-A-R. The mask resolution actually hugs the line of control instead of giving people the freedom of choice over their own health. Jim Mahin, an MD and medical surgeon, has a great statement about masks. He says, quote, "I'm a surgeon that has performed over 10,000 surgical procedures wearing a surgical mask. I believe that fact alone more than qualifies me as an expert on the matter. Additionally, I am a former editor of a medical journal that knows how to distinguish good science from bad and fact from fiction. Since the beginning of the pandemic, I've read hundreds of studies on the science of medical masks. Based on extensive review and analysis, there is no question in my mind that healthy people should not be wearing surgical or cloth masks, nor should we be recommending universal masking of all members of the population. That recommendation is not supported by the highest level of scientific evidence." Let's be clear. The premise that surgeons wearing masks serves as evidence that masks miswork to prevent viral transmission is a logical fallacy that I would classify as an argument of false equivalence or comparing apples to oranges. Although surgeons do wear masks to prevent their respiratory droplets from contaminating the surgical field and the exposed internal tissues of our surgical patients, that is about as far as the analogy extends. The COVID-19 pandemic is about viral transmission. Surgical and cloth masks do nothing to prevent viral transmission. We should all realize by now that face masks have never been shown to prevent or protect against viral transmission, which is exactly why they have never been recommended for use during the seasonal flu outbreak. The failure of the scientific literature to support medical masks for influenza and other viruses is also why Fauci, the US Surgeon General, the CDC, the WHO, and pretty much every infectious disease expert on the planet recommended against surgical mask wearing early in the pandemic. Although public health authorities like Fauci flip-flopped and changed their recommendations, the science did not change. If a surgeon were sick, especially with a viral infection, they would not perform surgery as they know the virus would not be stopped by their surgical mask. Unlike the public wearing masks in the community, surgeons work in sterile surgical suites equipped with heavy-duty air exchange systems that maintain positive pressures, exchange and filter the room air at a very high level, and increase the oxygen content of the room air. Surgeons and operating room personnel are well-trained, experienced, and meticulous about maintaining sterility. We only wear a fresh sterile mask. We wear the mask for short periods of time and change it out at the first signs of the excessive moisture build that degrades their effectiveness and increases their negative effects. Surgeons never reuse surgical masks, nor do we ever wear a cloth mask. The public is being told to wear masks for which they have not been trained in the proper techniques. As a result, they are mishandling frequently touching and constantly reusing masks in a way that increase contamination and are more likely than not to increase transmission of the disease. I personally have talked with those waiting tables and in the service industry that are forced to wear masks all day in order to get their paycheck. They are saying they can't breathe well with them on, their mask drenched in sweat, their customers can't understand them, and they are experiencing scratchy throats at the end of the day. There's a much bigger picture here as it relates to freedom. Ben Franklin wrote, "Any society that will give up a little liberty to gain a little security will deserve neither and lose both." I ask that you motion to table the resolution.
Thank you. Sir, you're next.
Matt Christopher, C.H.R.I.S.T.O.P.H.E.R. I probably won't take the whole three minutes, they're all saying everything that needs to be said. I think Mr. Anderson asked, are these things harmful when we wear them? I think we've shown, you get higher CO2, there are people passing out from them, you get pleurisy, lung infections, bad problems from wearing these. I'm really confused as to why this body would want to recommend that all businesses say, "Wear something that can be harmful to you." That's our recommendation, you should wear something that can be harmful to you. That doesn't make a lot of sense to me. And we've also seen that they probably aren't very effective at stopping the transmission of you getting COVID-19. So why are we recommending that you wear something that's probably not going to stop you from getting it in the first place? That just doesn't add up to me, I don't know why we're making this resolution. Really, it comes down to, you guys had also been talking about numbers back and forth, you got, what, 70,000 people in Walton County?
Give or take.
How many people are sick with it? 12. Well, 12 are in the hospital right now. Of 11400 tests that are positive, you have 12 people that are sick. Do you know what the percentage is of that? .001% of your population is affected by COVID right now. .001% of this entire population of the people that you serve are affected with this disease right now. What are we doing? Are there not better things that we can be talking about than COVID right now? Why are we having this? And until we just table this and just say, "We are not, this body is not discussing masks anymore, we are not even going to bring it up, we don't recommend it, we don't..." Make your own choice. That's what we say, and we're going to get back to doing what Walton County needs to get done. We've got so many other things. Fifth fastest-growing county in the nation, and we are spending week after week after week discussing this for hours. I'm sure you guys have much bigger things that you would like to deal with. I'm confident that that is true. So I just don't see where the emergency is. I think all of us agree, there's no, where's the emergency? We're putting people at risk, we're going to have this body recommend, that's our recommendation, is that you, all businesses, recommend people wear a mask that could be harmful to them. We should be doing the exact opposite, honestly. Should be saying, "We ain't doing nothing. We are done with this, we are not talking about it anymore, we're taking a stand as a body, and we're going to take a stand and be done, we're just done. And we're going to move on, and we're going to do the right thing for this county." Because we, .001%, that's it, 12 people. You can say we got 1,400 positives, you got 12 people that are affected by it right now. And that number really hasn't changed. If you look at all the weeks back, that number has not changed. So make a motion to table it, be done with it, that's what I recommend.
A gentleman is looking, I don't know if he wants to speak or not, in the light shirt. Do you want to speak? The lady in the back? I don't know what she said. All right, we're going to start, no, I'm going over here. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, my name is Wendy Adams. I want to thank you for hearing our public comments on mandatory masking two weeks ago and choosing not to enact such a measure. For good reason, there's no scientific studies that prove masking in public slows the spread of coronavirus. What's more, masks are dangerous for our health. They're unsanitary, they restrict oxygen, and force the inhalation of excess carbon dioxide. Additionally, such a mandate, even if they worked, and they don't, even if they were safe, and they are not, would be a violation of our civil liberties. It is for these same reasons that I should expect that you would not choose to recommend such masks for public use. It seems such a resolution is a gesture to appease a very local minority in the community that are irrational, panicked, and fearful, who would have you shut down the beaches and ban the tourists if they had their way. If in the interest of public health, shouldn't you take the trouble to recommend a healthy diet for building a stronger immune system to fight the COVID virus? Why not recommend eating fruits and vegetables, supplements, sunshine, vitamin C, fresh air, and exercise? If in the interest of public health, these are the things that are proven to make us healthier, and I must point out that there is nothing in this resolution recommending that everyone wash their hands, which is the most basic and proven of the CDC guidelines. Is this resolution actually suggesting, recommending that people wear masks outside on the public beaches, outside in 90-degree heat? Why would the committee pass such a resolution that no one will adhere to? This gesture appears to be, at best, disingenuous, and at worst, potentially dangerous. And finally, please clarify how this resolution applies to children. Have you considered that? If a masked child is kidnapped by masked kidnappers, how will witnesses identify the child for the Amber Alert? How will the muffled screams be heard? How would the kidnapper be identified? As a former probation and parole officer who has supervised convicted sex offenders, this is something that you must concern yourselves with. Masking makes abductions all too easy for the predators and much too difficult for law enforcement. In fact, wearing a mask or hood or device whereby any portion of the face is so hidden, concealed, or covered as to conceal the identity of the wearer in public has already been prohibited by Florida state law since 1951. According to Florida Department of Law Enforcement, there are 166 registered sex offenders in Walton County. I ask that you table this resolution.
Okay, thank you. Lee Robertson, R.O.B.E.R.T.S.O.N. I don't know how y'all can make a vote on this, you have no idea how many cases there are. Nobody knows. I've heard people say there's 10 times as many positive cases as anybody's even suggested. Like turning off the lights and having a moving target and shooting at it. Got no business doing this. I can't wear a mask. I go somewhere, I get looked at, dirty looks, I get told to get out of places, not by the store, but by other people in the store. Y'all are going to pass something that's going to tell people to tell me what I can and can't do, where I can and can't go. This is wrong. You don't have any idea how many people have it? Half the damn county might have it. Like the fellow said, there's 12 people in the hospital. You're going to start telling the whole county what's right and wrong with it? The CDC's changed their mind eight times about what's right and what's wrong with Y'all going to make decisions based on information that nobody knows is right or wrong? I would request that you would table this and make it go away. I don't need people jumping on me for gold chopping. Thank you. Thank you. All right, is anyone else in the room? I don't know if there's any in the hall. Have you spoke yet? All right, come on. All right, this will be the last one in this room, and then I got one to do on the Zoom.
Yes, sir. My name is Drew Robbins, R.O.B.B.I.N.S. I normally spend my days working with people on their metabolic health, and I want to say we're your friends, those of us who are here to present our points of view. I feel like we have two different wills, one saying, "Protect me, protect me," and one saying, "Let me protect myself," with that rugged individualist that is the American ideal and our constitutionally guaranteed liberties. I understand your desire to straddle the divide. I wouldn't take your job for anything. And I say that very... And I say that very seriously. You guys have a rough job, not interested. Every day, I produce a Walton County COVID-19 dashboard with a lot of analytics. I have to use about 12 different international, state, and national databases to do this. Takes a lot of time, but that's the only way to really get to the truth, to tell people what's going on. I study virology, immunology, cell biology issues associated with COVID, and I write extensively on these things. Let me just say this, there is no COVID emergency in Walton County, and I would challenge anybody to meet me anywhere and debate me on that issue and try to prove that there is. This is a practical COVID-free zone compared to anyplace else. Nice job. Nicely done for our police, for everybody involved in emergency management, so on and so forth. This is a great thing, and I'm very proud of that. But I think what we have to do is we have to realize that those who don't learn from history are bound to repeat it. Let's look at the history we have. Chautauqua, we've had eight deaths, Chautauqua Nursing Home, okay? Before any of this got started, N95 masks for direct patient contact with gowns, gloves, and face shields for direct patient contact was implemented. Surgical masks for everyone else in the building. So, did that help? No. We had deaths starting in May that went through almost the end of July. 20.2 days is the average incubation, start to stop period. So it's not as if everybody got it infected all at the same time. This has happened through time with masks. Now, I just did a comparison, comparative analysis between Holland and Finland, who have 80% to 90% non-mask compliance, and Italy and Spain have 80% to 90% mask compliance. Everywhere they go, they wear their mask. It made no difference. It made no difference. There's no difference in positives, there's no differences in deaths when you even, when you equalize for population difference. One final thing. Again, we're your friends, but I've watched a member of this commission play with the mask throughout this meeting, which effectively takes whatever's on that mask, puts it on the hand, so then whatever is touched after that is now contaminated. So we got to use these things correctly if you're even going to consider them.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, please.
What are your credentials?
My credential, I've worked for six years in metabolic health with Three Pillar Health.
Okay.
Okay?
I mean, I wanted you to put that on the record in saying that. Thank you.
All right.
Could you see me after the meeting?
I certainly will, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, that's all of the comments from inside the room. I see one hand raised, Barbara Morano. Barbara, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, identify yourself and spell your last name for the clerk.
My name is M-O-R-A-N-O. I want to thank, I want to thank the commissioners for agreeing to place the resolution on this agenda. This resolution, as Commissioner Gladwell said, is not a mandate, it's to encourage. It doesn't, and I'm saying this, not Commissioner Gladwell, but it's to encourage and it does not infringe on freedom, and it's not political. The state surgeon general, and Holly Holt, even mentioned that we should social distance if we can, then a face covering is encouraged. Let me make, let me go on a little, I'd like to mention a population that's gone unmentioned during this whole discussion and during the last BCC meeting, and they are the children of Walton County. The children. Teachers and administrators have gone back to work this week. Commissioner Nick, I'm sure you know the concerns of teachers and parents. Children, you have a wife who's an administrator. I called the office of the superintendent of Walton County Schools. We have 71% of the students returning to to 100% next semester, but we must act now. Our guests, tourists, come here from various huts in the country. Some, not all, think Walton County is party city. They come for a week and they go. They're tested in another state, they're tested in another county, they're tested in another place. We all want our beaches to remain open, we can agree on that. We want short-term rentals to continue, we all agree on that. And we want all our businesses to thrive, we all agree on that. The 14 and 28, all right, we talk about that. Holly Holt talks about the death rate, the amount of ICU beds. I have a statistic on recovery of those who test positive. Commissioner Anderson, you were very passionate about that. All good information, but this virus is devious, deceptive, and debilitating. Long-term symptoms remain unknown for those who test positive, for sometimes for those who test negative, for those who are asymptomatic. We honestly do not know. There is nobody in that audience that can say that there will never be long-term symptoms. We don't know. Passing this resolution sends a powerful, positive message that's blown from that emergency order that the county enacted. It basically says, "We care." If a business requests that you wear a mask, you're backing that business up, you're encouraging that business to make that statement. And for those in the audience who choose not to wear a mask when you go into public...
Barbara, your time's up. Thank you.
All right, I want unanimously supported. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's, well, there's one name popped up, Christopher Gossett. Christopher Gossett, are you there?
Hear me? Hello?
Okay, I hear you now. If you will, identify yourself, spell your last name for the clerk.
Hi, name's actually Derek Gossett, G-O-S-S-E-T-T. I also wanted to push for the table motion in regards to the last caller. He said it herself, there are too many unknowns as far as symptoms and what's going to happen to those that are asymptomatic. So she's giving you an opinion, an unknown, and an emotional response. All of the individuals that I call friends in that audience have given you facts backed by peer studies, peer reviews, and scientific data. So I would like to, you know, let the last, last word speak loudest in saying, "Don't vote on this politically, go based on what they've presented to you with the facts." Thank you, and sir, I couldn't be there.
All right, thank you. All right, I'll close with public comments section. If I ain't mistaken, there's a motion on the floor along with some modifications to the actual verbiage that's listed in there. I'm going to, I said I'm going to reserve my comments to the last, and so indulge me for a few minutes. Since this thing started back February, March, I haven't wore a mask. I felt it was my decision as an individual whether I wore it or not. Now, I do respect in certain locations, like maybe a hospital, I, my dad's 96, he's not in the best health, and I have not gone to see him. And I just don't want him to possibly catch us. I've tested negative. I've had and talked with people that concern, that I have concerns that the information that we receive is contradictory at times, is inconclusive at times, it's not exactly the same message every time. And we are like the CDC, they've changed, like the gentleman said, they've changed multiple times over the last several months. And I know this thing supposedly is fluid, it moves around, things change, and what have you. But I've always felt if you want to wear it, that's your business. I do not think government is in the position to mandate everything and protect everything that may happen out here in the world. And for that reason, I can't support the resolution. I would prefer this thing, we've kicked on it for over a month, that horse is dead, I need to move on, we've got more important things, in my opinion, that we need to be addressing. So I just put it out there right now in front of God and everybody, I'm not in support of it. Please, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I've battled back and forth on the mask, and, you know, I have worried about, and I would ask Mr. Fields to see me after the meeting with his machine. I, I too have trouble with government, but just for you people out there that, that are asking to table this motion, table this motion is not what you want, because that means we're going to bring it up at a later date, so.
Well, that's true. If it's tabled, it will be, it can be brought up at a future date.
But, but, Mr. Chairman, I have, you know, there's so much back and forth on this mask thing, on this disease itself, other than the carbon dioxide, which I've struggled with, understanding why it's not affecting me, but I have trouble making people, but I know this is just a recommendation. And my recommendation, if you want to wear a mask, wear a mask.
Do we need to put it in a formal resolution?
No, I don't think, I don't think personally we do. I think, I think it's everybody's individual decision, but I also think it's a business's decision if they require a mask. And, you know, I'm a pretty old guy, and it's going to become a time, probably in the near future, where I have some of the problems that some of you in the audience have. And I can tell you, if there's anything, even a chance that I'm breathing carbon dioxide, then I'm going to have a hard time wearing a mask. And, Mr. Fields, that's why I'd like to see you and your machine when we take a break. But I, you know, if, if, I'm not saying that masks work, and a couple of you said something about wearing masks is, is not going to protect you. I don't think anybody said it's going to protect you. The, the thought process of that is that it's going to protect others. And I'm not sure if that's true or not. Like I said, and Holly might can, can tell me if there's any science on it, because I've seen it now all over the place. I don't think we can tell, we should tell a business what they can and can't do. Now, do I, do I think they have that right? I do. If they can, if they can say you got to have a shirt and shoes on to come in their business, then they can certainly say you have to have a mask. And for all of you that get upset about that, you don't have to go in there. You can go somewhere else to shop. You know, you might have a little bit of a hard time finding a grocery store that doesn't want it, but heck, you can shop online. They'll deliver your groceries from public for a minimal fee. But I just, I just don't know that we need to order businesses or even recommend businesses keep people out.
Mr. Chairman? Briefly?
Briefly, please.
Was that shot at me?
I said both of you, go ahead.
I'm always brief. I made the motion so that we could take the language out that was, I thought, leaned towards a mandate. I intend to vote against my motion, which sounds crazy, but bear with me. If we table the motion, it can be, as the chairman said, it can be, or as Commissioner Anderson said, it can be brought back. Under our rules, reconsideration, once an action is taken on a proposed ordinance, resolution, or motion, neither ordinance, resolution, or motion, nor its repeal or rescission may be brought back before the commission during the six-month period following. So in other words, if we vote on it and, and vote against it, we kill it for six months. So I made the motion, but I intend to vote against my motion for those reasons. It's a parliamentary issue.
Commissioner, over.
I, I spoke with Drew, and I told him, I said, "I feel like this is benign." That's the exact words I used on the phone with you. After hearing you, I don't think it's benign. I think it's exactly what Mr. LaSalle and other people are saying. It is, it's stepping on our infringements, and it's more and more, and what bothers me is, I can't stand wearing that mask, but I have to go to Publix, I've got to go to Walmart, I'll wear it because those are my grocery stores, but I don't have to go there, I can shop online, I can do other things. So I'm, I'm in concert with Commissioner Gladwell.
All right, Commissioner Nick, you got any comments?
Make it short.
Yeah, well, I tell you, you know, I don't require it in my business. You know, I'm not going to, I'm, that's right. And I tell you, I'm not going to, I'm not going to sit here and tell you as a government official that you need to do this. If I want to smoke my Marlboro Reds, I'm going to smoke my Marlboro Reds, and I don't want you telling the government, telling me I can't do that. So.
You don't even smoke.
I started today. I think you know where I stand on it.
All right. All right.
So now it's, yep.
Call the question?
All the questions.
All in favor, say aye on the question. We have to take a vote on the call question.
Aye. Oh, aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay. All right, well, you know what the motion is? It's on the floor, and there is a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Nay. It's dead. We're going to take a 10-minute recess. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Item number 30 is our next agenda item in this request to select a candidate to fill the at-large position on the Coastal Dune Lake Advisory Board. You have a list of those below that have submitted their names for consideration. You, you may ask Ms. Gates if she has a recommendation if the board does not have one.
Okay, Ms. Gates?
Melinda Gates, for the record. We have eight qualified candidates for this particular board. It, you know, obviously, we have to pick one, so Julia Danom is the individual I would recommend at this time.
She lives over around Lake Powell, if I'm not mistaken.
That is correct. Yeah, we do not have, currently have a representation around Lake Powell, although this is an at-large position. It, it makes it nice for adjusting positions. Sometimes my on-lake positions are a little bit more difficult to fill, so I can always shuffle titles if necessary.
Motion. You have a motion to approve her or appoint her?
Yes, please.
Motion to appoint Julia Dom?
Okay.
Got a motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Melinda.
Our next item was pulled from the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Right.
That's all we have.
Okay. All right, next up is TDC, number, item number 32. Jay, you going to handle it?
I am, thank you. Good evening, commissioners, Mr. Chairman. The item from the TDC is request approval to advertise an invitation to bid for construction of a new scenic golf drive, regional beach access. So the board may recall, we've been working on this for some time, and we're ready to move to the next phase of construction, so we're very excited about that. Let me give you a few particulars on this project. It is a 2.4-acre site. We're looking at a cost to improve at $1,225,000. We'll have 16 regular parking spaces, two handicap spaces, nine golf cart spaces, and 16 bicycle spaces that are expandable to 32. We'll have male and female restrooms. The males will have two urinals and one toilet, handicap toilet. And then the female restroom will have two toilets, one handicap, one regular. And we'll have a boardwalk that will be handicap accessible for wheelchairs, and we'll also have stairs going down, and the stairwell will include a 410-square-foot pavilion. So you can kind of see some of these on, on the plans that are up on the screens now. And then we're looking at construction procurement, it will take about two months, and then the construction duration will take about eight months. So we're looking to begin construction at the beginning of November, which will carry us through June. So that is kind of where we are with the project. If there's any questions of the board, I'd be happy to...
Any questions for Jay? Seeing none here, what's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second, is any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Is that all you got, Jay?
That is, sir.
Okay. All right, there's a, um, this is a public hearing, so I'll entertain a motion to open up a public hearing.
No move.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, Heather, you going to take this one?
Yes, Chairman, and I'd like to read this, uh, ordinance by title. It does not have a number assigned, but this will be ordinance 2020 dash whatever number the clerk assigns. It's an ordinance of Walton County, Florida, providing for a referendum election on the November 3rd, 2020, general election ballot to approve or disapprove the amendment of the boundaries of the existing tourist development taxing district to include the entire area of Walton County not currently subject to the tax and to levy a 2% tourist development tax within the portion of the Walton County not currently subject to the tax, repealing ordinances in conflict and providing an effective date. Um, that's it. In, in this particular ordinance, all this ordinance does is it provides the ballot language that we're sending over to Mr. Beasley's office to be included on the November 3rd, uh, ballot. There will be, um, subsequent actions that we'll need the board to take to have the tax come into effect in the event that voters do approve it and that'll come between this meeting and the election in November.
Okay. Any questions?
Uh, I, I have just one, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Heather, this, this, uh, this two-cent tax, that's the maximum the state will let us start off with.
That is my understanding. I could, I, I might be wrong on that. This is not my, this is, um.
Jay has acknowledged to me that that is the max we can apply initially on this.
And that's also consistent with the way it was first imposed in the original, the district that.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
That is correct, okay.
All right.
Ooh, motion to, you need a motion?
Yes.
I need a motion, a motion to approve the, uh, the ordinance and, uh, schedule the referendum.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Did you take public comment on that?
Well, I didn't ask, but he can. Is there any public comment on it? Barbara Moreno, you hear me?
Yes, sir. Uh, M-O-R-A-N-O, I would appreciate just some information for the public and maybe even put out, um, a little public information on the TDC site. Um, I had to find out some information on my own. Uh, for example, money generated from the, uh, 2% tax, I'm assuming that's segregated from the money that's generated from South Walton.
That is correct, Barbara. It's on a separate line item for the north of the bay area. Uh, those monies would be spent in that geographic area and not across the bay and the monies from across the bay would not be used on the north side of the bay if this is passed.
Right. And, and I think that's important for people to know. And the other quick question is, you know, would there be a building or, um, obviously an administrative area just dedicated, uh, for this particular north Walton and the 2%? You know, the administration to do the activities that you want some of that money.
I'm going to let Jay respond to that, Barbara.
Uh, the, the short-term answer to that is no, Barbara. Uh, we're planning to let the TDC, um, run and maintain the North Walton efforts. Uh, we're not anticipating a lot of funds to be generated at first, so we want to see how we can capitalize on those funds for promotional purposes. And, uh, we'll look at long-term if we need to have any type of facility. Uh, we are looking to partner perhaps with the chamber and use some of their facilities in the north end, but that's still kind of to be determined.
Got to answer your questions, Barbara?
It does. Is it possible to put out?
Lost you, Barbara, try it again.
All right, is it possible to?
I think she wants a fact sheet.
A bit more fact sheet, yeah, and that could be put.
Okay.
So, I'll kind of try to address that. I think I know what she's asking. So, Barbara, you're breaking up on us, but, um, the, the county cannot advocate for the tax, but I've had some conversations with the chamber and, uh, they are interested in advocating for the, uh, the tax. And so, uh, in my conversation with Megan Harrison, um, she has an interest in, in producing some type of fact sheet. Um, so I think something will be forthcoming in the near future.
Okay, appreciate that because it's the whole county that will be voting for this, not just the north, I assume, correct?
That, that is not correct. It is just the north, just the taxing district will vote on it.
Oh, so it's just north county?
Just north, north of the bay.
All right, all right, I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, uh, we have a topic.
Need to close the public hearing, sir?
Yeah, well, motion to close it.
Motion to close.
Second.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, um, I want to go ahead and move up citizens' request because we've got a topic coming up that could get lengthy again. So, um, Thomas Gilmore, are you here? There you go. All right, Mr. Gilmore?
I'll be really brief. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank the commission, especially for your time. This is brutal stuff. I don't know how you do it. Uh, I'd also like to thank the sheriff for his sacrifice and all the deputies. I'm pleading for help for my neighborhood. Um, I've expressed to some of you gentlemen, my love for Walton County and the beauty here. That's what brings me in this room. We have trash and debris and garbage spilling into the streets in Vilatasso, in my neighborhood. When I spoke to the code enforcement board last month, um, and, uh, Mr. Carpenter suggested that I come here and plead before you today, they mentioned that there has been successful, proactive enforcement in Vilatasso in the past. Um, I believe that the phrase law and order means something. What does a bad neighborhood look like? Come and see. I can tell you what one feels like. I cannot walk by a place with trash and debris spilling into the street and not be assaulted by more than one pit bull. And I can tell you that animal control is the least of the problems that we have there in terms of law enforcement. I encourage you to get with the sheriff, look at the reports. I'm pleading you, with you from the bottom of my heart. Um, that's all I have unless you have questions.
Any questions for him?
Uh, sir, is, is this, uh, people dumping trash there or is it trash just neighbors not?
We, we have a culture of illegal dumping in Vilatasso. I did share movies and pictures, uh, with, uh, Ms. Mary. I, I don't know if you were able to get them, but it's egregious and, uh, you can't pin the trash on a particular person if other people are coming around saying there's a pile of trash there or if there is a illegal, um, junkyard business in the area or more than one illegal junkyard businesses. But I'm not in the business of law enforcement. I'm just a citizen who lives in a neighborhood that I love.
Okay. All right, um, Mr. Gilmore, I'm going to take you back about, uh, probably 25 years when, when you mentioned about the, uh, the dogs. We had an eight-year-old kid that got mauled by a herd of them things and seriously injured the kid, almost killed him. And, uh, subsequently, the sheriff at the time, and I happened to be there, rounded up those dogs. Uh, we dispatched them dogs and sent their heads to have them checked. They all turned out to be negative forest rabies, but that still didn't negate the fact that that boy got ripped apart. Uh, the enforcement arm back then was just the sheriff. Now, they got animal control now. So, I would ask staff to reach out to the sheriff and ask him to maybe, uh, have their animal control officers out there more often. If they're running loose off their property, then they're in violation and they should, uh, attempt to catch them if they can. Now, as far as the garbage, if there dump, illegal dumping going on out there, uh, it's unfortunate that people still do that because years ago, we passed the one-cent sales tax that pays for your garbage. You know, all you got to do is put it by the edge of the road, but it takes a lot of effort to take it out and put it in your pickup truck, run it out down a dirt road and throw it out. And when there, it's just as easy to do it at your house. But those, uh, things, uh, was also held responsible by the sheriff. Um, it's not an easy task. You got to start digging through it, but I would think, uh, I don't see why our code guys could not also engage in that part of it. Um, now, as far as what you related to is possibly illegal type of, uh, yards that's going on out there, whether it's a junkyard or whatever the case might be, if there's a, a complaint filed, then code's going to go look at that and see if they are in fact in violation. So, if you, not everybody wants to put their name on a complaint and I don't know if you do or not, but it, it, it takes that because we, we don't have, at the present time, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Jones, that they go out every day and just ride streets and all that. They got so much coming in just from the complaint-driven side of it. They don't have a lot of time to go out there and just go down roads and everything on a proactive basis, seeing it, taking action.
There's two or three streets and the amount of garbage on Air Force property, who's my employer, what am I saying? The Air Force should be taking care of the mountains of garbage that people are putting there and there's homeless camps all around on the Air Force property. I talked to them.
Have you brought that to their attention?
Yes, sir.
And they taking no action?
As far as I know, they said they might send letters to people they could find. Uh, what I'm finding is, is, um, you, you know what the board, the, the code enforcement board told me that it wasn't their job when I was in front of them. I don't, I'm, look at me, I'm, I'm, now I'm on paper. So, so there's two streets, right? Yeah, I get it. I'm complaining. There's two streets. You're all welcome to come see it. It's huge mountains.
Commissioner Jones. If I might suggest, um, it sounds like there's a number of issues going on here from code to environmental issues to perhaps issues that we could address with our solid waste provider, uh, with your direction. Um, we would take, um, the information from Mr. Gilmore and let, uh, Tony Coromans here, Tony is our, um, as you know, a code enforcement director, and provide him the information that you have on locations and the greatest concerns. Let us, let us work with the sheriff's office, with the environmental regulatory agencies. There may be issues that DEP needs to be involved in, but we'll, we'll, over the next couple of weeks, Tony, is that timely enough, uh, get out there and do an assessment of what we see, not to confirm but, or deny, but to, uh, from a, from an enforcement side, what resources we have at our disposal and how we could best utilize them to help Mr. Gilmore in the situation there in Vilatasso. So, we'd be happy to do that with your direction.
I would also ask you to, to reach out to the Air Force too, you know?
Sure, yes, sir.
Because we obviously can't go on reservation and take any action, uh, but we got to get them to, but I'm not sure how that's going to work because I, I don't want to belabor the point, but when I was with the sheriff's office, we had a meeting with the base commander and that's probably been about 10, 11 years ago. And what they were trying to do is back off of what they would normally do and ask the sheriff to take care, but they didn't want to fund the extra additional worker men or equipment to do it. And we didn't do anything, so it falls back on to the military, the police and/or the range patrol officers out there. But I agree, unless the board has any other.
I just have one thing. Um, I used to work out there at Vilatasso on patrol a long time ago and there was a neighborhood watch. I don't know if it's still in existence, but, um, one problem that's always existed in Vilatasso is right on the county line and people from Okaloosa who don't have the, uh, don't, can't avail themselves of the one-cent sales tax to get their garbage picked up. Same problem in Mossy Head, they run across the line and dump it. And the neighborhood watch used to be good about getting tag numbers. So, if, if there is such a thing in existence still, you might want to see if they'll get you some tag numbers. If it doesn't exist, y'all might want to consider reorganizing one.
I would say that I, uh, after taking the advice of the, um, code enforcement board, I will take your advice and I will try to, uh, reenact or, or reconvene the neighborhood watch.
Those, that program was very valuable back when he was the boss.
All right, and I might want to see about that.
Also, Mr. Gilmore, if you have a number at the Air Force that we could contact?
I do, I'll, I'll share that.
Share that with Tony.
It would be helpful for us.
Yes, sir.
All right, okay.
Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
God bless.
All right, uh, Mr. Chairman, the next item, uh, that, uh, under citizens' request was the add-on at the request of Lee Moore. Uh, Lee is now the executive director of the scenic Walton, um, organization and they are applying for an impact 100 grant, application to the state, and there's some details, uh, there that we provided for you. She is requesting, um, she has requested that a commissioner would join her in the presentation of their application to those that will make the award. And I'm going to suggest that we also prepare a resolution of support, uh, for her organization and the work they're doing, uh, which does nothing but give them more support, uh, toward, uh, receiving this grant. It's highly competitive, so the better they can do, uh, the, the more support they can take, the better their chances of moving it forward. Um, so that would be, uh, Lee's request and I think she's online if she wants to add anything to that, but the bottom line is she would like the board's support to appoint a member to accompany her to the grant application presentation, which will be a Zoom presentation. And we would suggest that you add a resolution of support, uh, for the, uh, scenic Walton, uh, initiative.
All right, well, let me see if she's there. I don't see her hand going up.
Mr. Chairman, while she's.
Yeah.
Well, I don't have that one on my screen.
While she's.
Yeah, there it is now, just shot it.
While she's doing that, um, if, if it's all right with the other board members, I've talked to her about it and I'll, I'll be glad to go take care of that if it's all right with y'all. I didn't figure there'd be any opposition.
All right, Lee, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I hear you. Identify yourself, say your last name for the clerk.
Thank you, Commissioner Chapman. This is Lee Moore and last name is M-O-O-R-E.
Go ahead, Lee.
Thank you all, um, staff and commissioners, um, for hearing me and for adding this to the agenda. Um, so I'll start off by saying that I've, I, I understand I've developed a little bit of a nickname, um, there in the county of, uh, Lee More Money. And so, this would be, um, an effort to change that a little bit to Lee Asking For More Money to Lee Bringing More Money, um, to the table. So, um, and I'm, I'm being funny, but that is the gist of it, um, except it's really not just me at scenic Walton. So, so this grant, um, I had a con, I came up with a concept of, you know, instead of, of, um, working to, um, you know, get, ask the county to look for, to fund all these projects and all the phases of projects. And what we're looking at here specifically is pedestrian and cyclist facility projects as well as median landscaping projects throughout the county. Um, I hadn't announced, um, months ago that we expanded our geographic reach to all of the county. So, um, what the, the idea is that we would work with the TDC and the county, um, to identify projects in those areas, um, or those types of projects that, um, we could facilitate by, um, us funding the design of those projects and then donating that design work to the county. And we would also, if a grant is target for funding, we would, um, either contract someone to write the grant or write it ourselves and then donate that grant application. and then donate that grant application to the county. And this is just to facilitate so that the county can then go and, and pursue construction funding for the project. And we feel like, you know, we want to become a partner, more of a partner with sources to the table to get more of these projects done more quickly. And they're all, you know, safety improvement, quality of life and beautification project. So that's the concept behind it. And the grant would fund a pilot program to get this up off the ground. And then our intention would be to identify funding sources going forward for this to be a permanent way that we work with the county to work together to get things done. So the, the presentation, it would just be wonderful to have a commissioner there to represent the board and saying that you support this and that you agree to accept these donated services if we do indeed win the grant award. And also that, I, I love Larry's suggestion that there, if there could be a letter or resolution of support from the board that we could present to Impact 100, that would.
Okay, Lee, I think we got it. We lost you, but we got the gist and your time is up anyway. Okay, what's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, approve what?
Approve her request for a commissioner to help her ask for this and a resolution to say that the county is supporting this.
Okay.
Second.
And that appointee, so to speak, is Commissioner Gladwell.
Yes, and that appointee is Commissioner Gladwell.
All right, I need a second.
I have a second.
Okay, all right. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, I think I skipped over one before we get into this other part of it, number 34. That's a franchise agreement between us and the city of Freeport. Go ahead.
Yes, Chairman, and actually somebody from the city of Freeport was here at the beginning of the meeting, Mr. Simmons. I haven't seen him here since, but.
Charlie gone.
Okay, this is the extension, as, as you all are probably aware, we have a 30-year franchise agreement for water and sewer with the city of Freeport. And that was coming up for renewal this month. And there is a term that allows the city of Freeport to extend or exercise an option to renew for an additional 30 years. Staff and some, for the county and staff with the city of Freeport took the opportunity to get together and discuss adding some additional requirements to the franchise agreement that would require the city of Freeport to bring back a, a presentation to the BCC annually to open up a better line of communication. And that's what Exhibit A does. And the city of Freeport, my understanding is they actually have the same agreement on their meeting today. And I, I don't know the result of the vote, but that's.
Okay.
I met here this morning.
And they signed off on this agreement as far as that's concerned?
Give us a few minutes, we can see if we can find out.
They give you a second to find out, Charlie.
Saw him outside before the meeting and I probably should have asked him that. I didn't realize that their meeting was in the morning.
And Chairman, if you hate to use this word, but if you would like to table this until later on in the meeting, that's, I don't know how long it's gonna take Larry to get an answer. But if you'd like to bring it back later, that would be fine as well.
What's the board's one do? You want to hold off?
Want to recess or you want to table it for?
If we table it, that's.
Take, take it to the end of the meeting and just move it, move it to after the planning items, is that?
You can do that.
Just whenever, whenever Larry gets an answer, we'll bring it back.
We'll just go ahead and, and do that. We'll move it to, towards the end. Okay, Commissioner Gladwell, you got anything?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Nipper, I'm gonna hold off and get you last. Commissioner Nick.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
One thing I've got, for those of y'all, y'all know I've sat on the value adjustment board. That board requires two commissioners to sit on it. And normally, one of the county commissioners is considered the chair, which I am. It doesn't meet very much, but it does meet towards the end of every year. It is to address any type of person that may have a, you know, application concerning their property taxes. Now, the good thing about this is we have a magistrate that hears all these particular issues and makes a ruling according to the law. And we had a called meeting about a week ago to set up some guidelines as to how we're going to address the meetings coming up. To let you know the next, if we have no applications that are not settled, the last meeting will be November the 17th. However, there's an organizational meeting September 18th. So I'm asking the board to assign somebody or nominate them to be assigned to the VAB to fill that second position, to be available on September the 18th when they have their organizational meeting. Huh? 16th? I'm sorry, 16th. And they'll have their organizational meeting. And from there, they'll pick a chair, vice chair and move forward in the process, correct, Kim? All right, so making this recommendation or discussion is because, as you know, I've got 92 days left on the board and I'll be gone. And this process could go into December. So, and in the November, the 17th is after my, is two days after my term ends. So we gotta make that adjustment and get somebody to step up and take it. So Commissioner Nipper, you're not running. I'm not running.
I am running.
You are running.
I, I, Mr. Chairman, if I could just intervene a second. I, I would like for Mr. Nick to step up into this position.
I'll be there.
You'll do it?
I was thinking, say we're running out because I'm already there.
Forces were limited. But, okay, so Kim, they, that board needed a motion from us for this assignment, didn't it?
Well, then I make a motion that Mr. Nick be the, take your place on the.
VAB.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Here it is. All right, Commissioner.
You have an answer?
Do what?
Yeah, they did approve it. Second.
We'll go back to that.
Okay, what's the board's wishes on, we're back on the franchise.
Motion to approve the extension of the franchise.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, now Commissioner Nipper.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Because of the COVID and difficulties with rooms that have Zoom, a lot of the subcommittees for when we review the chapter 25 regarding our beach activities ordinance, they haven't been able to meet and that's why I'm kind of bringing it up. And as Mr. Chapman said, I've got 92 days left. So two issues here. One, Mr. Chapman, I remember you and I were both, last time we talked about the beach activities ordinance, we had enforcement procedures and somehow, and part of it is working with 210 Winston Lane, those enforcement procedures and how we handle the permits and how we take care of things should, should a vendor go rogue are not in chapter 25. And I strongly suggest that we have some type of enforcement procedures to protect not only the vendor, the county, and then the citizens. And that is the crux of this with 210 Winston Lane. That property is a four-bedroom, three-bath house, beachfront property. And it has a single-site permit for vending. But it, the permit is for 25 beach setups. That's 50 people on their property. To me, that is a more of a commercial entity instead of servicing the people that would be there on vacation. If you're on vacation, that would maybe be eight people, four bedrooms, eight people, 10 people, five sets, five, 10 umbrellas, 10 beach chairs. And we're just growing. So when the vendor, this, I don't think this has happened yet. We've been, I've been dealing with emails since about March when all this came forward. But this is the first time, and I just wanted to bring it up so that we can at least talk about it now or you can in the future and it doesn't become a huge issue. And then we've got more than just 210 Winston Lane. So what happens on 210 Winston Lane is there's 50 people on that property and that property's not even being rented. It's a, it's a vacant shell. There's not, I don't even think there's furniture in there. So really, what we have to me is a valid vending permit for 25 sets of beach chairs and umbrellas on a residential property. And this is part to do with the land development code, not the beach activities ordinance. And that's what Mac has brought up to me. And he has said that he's, I don't want to say proposing a fix, but he's working with it to bring it forward to you when the day comes when, I guess, chapter 22 comes forward or now. I, I just don't know where to move forward. But that's about the issues that we have that I do, this is not a, this is a commercial operation on a residential property in inlet beach, which is a residence.
Okay, well, historically, over the last several years, we tried at the end of the season to meet to discuss any issues that we've had during that time that is affected by the beach activities ordinance. And at that time, we, we have a presentation and we try to tweak it, if you will. It's worked out pretty good in the past in that we take care of all the concerns or at one time, instead of piecemealing it from one month to another to another. Because that's the way it used to do when I first came on the board. And it was very time-consuming and it took, and it just wasn't a continuity in there. Now, in reference to this here, I met with Mac yesterday, I think it was. And I asked Mac to put on a presentation to tell us, because this, some of these issues here go back to 2003. So without further ado, I'm going to ask Mac to come up and brief the entire board on how things have taken and transpired since 2003. And I want to make a statement at this time. What Mac is going to talk to us about is in the public record. It's been there and it's not something that he is just arbitrarily taking a position on. He's using existing statutes and past actions of this board. Maybe not this board, but the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Matt Carpenter for the Planning Department, C-A-R-P-E-N-T-E-R. Over the last several months, there has been much discussion of 210 Winston Lane and beach activities occurring on that particular parcel. And there's been much email and much discussion on social media about beach vending and what actions the county has taken on 210 Winston Lane. So I'd like to take the opportunity just to review some history, specifically about this parcel and then history about the beach activities ordinance. We had a number of complaints filed against 210 Winston Lane earlier this summer. In response to those code complaints on 210 Winston Lane, I made a determination on June 22nd that the point was operating an off-site amenity without a development order. Stop work orders were then issued to the point to cease the use and advertisement of the point amenity at that location and to the owner of the 210 Winston Lane property to cease allowing that to happen on the parcel without a development order. Both of those parties have been known to appear and that case will be heard by the Code Enforcement Board on August 20th, which will be next Thursday. The beach vending permit was not the subject of the determination. So those two cases will be heard next week. And I believe we are well-prepared to win those two cases. But just to give you a little bit of a history on the beach activities ordinance, because there's been quite a request for the planning director to issue determination that finds the beach act, the activities on 210 Winston Lane in conflict with Walton County Land Development Code. And I'm here to tell you today, that is not within my authority. But just for a little history, the Walton County Board of Commissioners on November 7, 1996, adopted the current comprehensive plan that we have amended over time since then. Shortly after that adoption, the board also adopted the Unified Land Development Code as the implementation vehicle for the comprehensive plan just adopted. Not very long after that, in 1997, the inlet beach neighborhood plan was adopted by ordinance as a component of the Walton County land, or comprehensive plan. In 2003, the Board of County Commissioners passed ordinance 2007, or 2003-07, which was our first beach activities ordinance on April 8, 2003. And essentially, the title of that ordinance spoke to governing the use of the beach and, among other things, regulation of beach vendors. Section 3 of that ordinance, 2003-07, specifically preempted any conflicting ordinance in Walton County. So the beach activities ordinance stands on its own. If there's anything in the land development code that is in conflict with the beach activities ordinance, the beach activities ordinance controls. So as a result of a legislative determination made in 2003 and reaffirmed in 2011, when the county adopted the certificate of land use process in ordinance 2011-62, adopted on July 12, 2011, the county reaffirmed that beach vending would not be subject to the land development code. And in the definition of a business, those businesses that are subject to that ordinance is specifically exempted beach vending and three other things, or three or four other things, from requirements to get a certificate of land use compliance with the Walton County Land Development Code. So those are two specific instances where beach activities were determined legislatively not to be subject to the land development code. And since it's not subject to the land development code, the planning director is charged with making administrative decisions on lots of things. But 1.11.02 of the land development code, item number subsection A6, the planning director does not have the authority to act on any other matter as to which this code does not specify any necessary review and final action by the Board of County Commissioners or board appointed by the commissioners. The beach activities ordinance was a legislative decision. The Walton County Land Development Code adoption and the comprehensive plan, both of those were legislative decisions. This board was very clear in saying beach activities are not subject to the land development code. And the things that are subject to the Land Development Code on 210 Winston Lane are going to the code board, where we will prosecute the violation of the code. Now, going through this and getting a ton of emails, one of those particular emails pointed out, while complaining about beach activities, pointed out that apparently there's a business occurring. In this particular case, they suggested 240 Winston Lane. We looked, we couldn't find anything that was any different on that lot or the adjacent lots than what was happening on 210 Winston Lane. Till I dug a little bit further. This is the county's public record for the development of the Conradina PUD. Conradina PUD is now known as the Barbary Coast subdivision. I'm going to just review just a little bit of history on this. This development was going through the county's approval process in 2001. It's in neighborhood infill, and as a requirement at the time, as it is today, a community meeting was required, and that was held on August 20, 2001. And at that community meeting, there were a number of questions asked, and the developer, as required, is required to provide a written summary of the meeting. There were 15 questions asked, and they displayed in this report the answers they provided. And question number seven was, where is the beach access for Conradina? And the developer pointed to the group, or pointed out to the group, and the southeast corner of the proposed subdivision, adjacent to the 33-foot government patent access at the end of Winston Lane, was indicated as to that group prior to the board's approval, and this was part of the record that came to the board, that their beach access would be at 210 Winston Lane, the 33-foot government patent easement on the western end of that. Subsequent to that, the Board of County Commissioners approved development order number 1312 on April 9, 2001, for the development of a 22-unit subdivision. On March 14, 2002, the plat for the Barbary Coast subdivision was recorded at plat book 15, page 12 through 12B. There's no beach parcel associated with this subdivision as approved by the Board of County Commissioners. However, shortly after the plat was approved, the covenants and restrictions were recorded on May 24, 2002, and less than 30 days later, the covenants were amended. And two beachfront lots were added to the covenants and restrictions for the Barbary Coast, outside of the approval of the Board of County Commissioners. Now, recorded in public records as an amendment to the covenants and restrictions, it was recorded June 18, 2002. Additionally, on that same date, a beach access and use agreement was recorded. It appears in public records. And the lots in the Conradina PUD, now known as Barbary Coast, were given the opportunity to have a private beach club right across the street from their subdivision, without getting the Board of County Commissioners to approve it. Now, when I've talked with the public and with various commissioners, I've suggested that this is not as simple as it may look. Because this occurred almost 20 years ago. Their beach club did not get permission from the Board of County Commissioners to be created. It was created on two single-family lots in residential preservation zone, at the time, Peterland Use District, now it's residential preservation zoning. Neither of which allows a business that's not allowed by development order prior to the adoption of the comp plan. So, yeah, these beach vending operations are businesses. The board has chosen to regulate them separate and apart from the Land Development Code, but the board has been very clear, and the public may recall, the Nature Walk Beach Club, which was proposed by development order, which was not approved by this board. In this particular case, we got the exact same thing. They just didn't apply for a development order, and they did it anyway. Now, we're going to the code board next week, and we expect, or I expect the code board to find the Point condominium in violation of its development order for creating an off-site amenity without going through the development order process. What's the difference with Conradina PUD and the Barbary Coast subdivision? Well, I guess two things. One is, they didn't get, they didn't get board approval either, so that's very same as the Point condominium. They recorded their covenants and restrictions, and they recorded a beach access and use So the Barbary Coast actually has an easement through these documents to the beach, to use the beach, on two other residential lots. The Point condominium, they didn't go to the point of recording an easement for the use of 210 Winston Lane, but had they done that, they would have done the exact same thing that the Conradina, or Conradina PUD, now known as Barbary Coast, actually did some 18, 19 years ago. So what's the difference? Neither one of them got board approval. And we're taking one to the code board. I'm going to suggest, this is, again, this is complex. There are certain members of the neighborhood, specifically the Barbary Coast neighborhood, that want, and other members in Inlet Beach, that want the intensity of beach vending to be tied to the zoning category where the beach vending is occurring, and the board's approval of development on that site. I think I've made it very clear that right now, there is no connection between Land Development Code and the beach vending ordinance. If the board chose to do that, that would be a legislative decision. It's not one the Planning Director can make, and it's not one that has to be made. But some measure of intensity on a parcel might be something to consider in the review of the Beach Activities Ordinance that we do each year after Labor Day. But my suggestion again is it is not as simple as we think it is. Because having grown up here, every beach house that is not on the beach, likely sometime in the last 75 years, has entered into a private easement agreement with that beachfront owner to allow a certain amount of traffic onto their portion of the beach. And I would imagine, and in this particular document, there is another development that's mentioned that also has rights to use those two lots on the beach. Haven't had an opportunity to actually figure out which one that was, because names have changed over the years. But we got the exact same circumstance. The two lots that are part of the Barbary Coast covenants, two residential lots, one is a two, three-bedroom, three-bath, the other one is a four-bedroom, four-and-a-half bath. Each one of those parcels has a beach vending operation on it that provides for eight, eight umbrellas and 16 chairs. So that's a total of 32 beach chairs, 16 umbrellas that are sitting on the beach club for the Conradina subdivision. I'd suggest that's more than probably what the capacity of that house would be, but since we don't have a measure of that, I don't know. But if you just look at the number of bedrooms compared to the number of beach setups, which is what we're being asked to do, it appears that they may be overdriving their particular beach club, which has not gotten a permit from Walton County.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question? Is it legal for somebody to just go and record something and the board not approve it?
Well, is it legal to record a document? Yes, sir. Is it legal to create a development without this board's approval? Or if it were small enough without the Planning Director's approval? No, sir, it is not.
So potentially, there's a whole bunch of people out in violation, because they've never come to this board and asked for anything.
Potentially.
So why don't we take them to the code board?
Why don't we take?
All of them? Or at least the ones we know about? I mean, is it fair to do one and not the other?
We're taking the first one, the point.
Okay.
And that's the one we're prepared to take yet, but in the investigation of that particular case, clearly, this subdivision has the exact same circumstance. They just went to the trouble of recording their documents to prove it for us. Whereas the point probably has documents, they just aren't recorded in public records.
But none of those documents are legal?
They weren't approved by this board.
That's...
And that's the case that we're going to the code board on the point next week.
Well, if we win one, looks like we got a case on the rest of them.
Well, as I suggested, this is much more complicated than it looks. That's where we are.
Well, as far as the Barbary Coast, with what you've told us about tonight, and what the records indicate, is there a remedy to get them in compliance?
Ah, that's come to this board, or they have to apply for a development order.
Right. But in the meantime, let's say they don't. What is the action legal? What's the action the county can take to compel Barbary Coast to do what they need to do legally?
It would be just exactly the same thing that the county, or that code enforcement is doing with the point right now. It would be to issue them a notice of violation and ultimately bring them before the code board if they did not come into compliance.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Mac, Ms. Nipper?
I'm not here to throw barbs or anything. I just feel like as we move forward, the, somehow, there's got to be a connection of a residential home, or I suggest, and how many beach setups are allowed on that residential home. And arbitrary numbers has worked more than likely until now, you know, where a vendor says, "I've got 25 sets," and it'd be...
Yes, ma'am, and that's, we've been taking, you know, what their request is and approving that, or at least the TDC has.
I'd just suggest in the future that we look at it as a residential piece of property, and attaching that to some form of, I don't know, how many people would normally occupy that area.
I think some measure of intensity could be inserted into the Beach Activities Ordinance, if that were the pleasure of the board, without having to amend Land Development Code.
Right.
All right. If I meant it that way, I'm sorry, that's kind of where you and I were going with all the emails and meetings that we had. So however it works, I'm just saying, we're growing. We're absolutely growing, and 210 Winston Lane is sitting there as a shell. There is no furniture in that house, and it's being used as a permit in order to vend, which is perfectly legal, I know that.
Yes.
I know that, but it's just a situation we're in.
I think...
Commissioner, if I may interject, Labor Day ain't that far away, and then we start having our discussions concerning any changes to the beach activity. It'll take place before you and I leave the board, so I would suggest let's come back at that time with, maybe we attach some intensity to a residential area, and make that modification and change at that time, and whatever else the beach people will bring to us for discussion.
I do think, judging from the emails I get, that the people in Inlet Beach would like to see residential mean residential, and so move on and make residential mean residential.
The thing we have, though, if I may interrupt just a second, is we have 26 miles of beach where this goes on all over the place, where people have agreements. I may own a house on the beach, but I may have five houses north of there, north of 38, that I allow them to use the beach too. And there's probably, I would say, a small number would be hundreds of those. So what we're doing when we say that is nobody north of 38 can use a residential property to access the beach. Is that what we're saying, Mac?
Well, that's potentially what we're saying, but my point is, as you well know, having grown up here, in the 60s, when I went to the beach with my family, and we stayed off the beach, but the folks that we rented from told us exactly where that easement was, on how to get to the beach. And my point is that every house north of the beach has some kind of arrangement like this.
I didn't want to get into that. I don't want to get into messing with, I'm just talking about these bigger developments that...
Well, and that may be where we need to go.
And Inlet Beach has got their own plans, so, I mean...
That's one very big discussion we had, inlet, that's what I thought, inlet would hover over the Land Development Code, and it doesn't. Am I right, Mac?
No, ma'am, it does. It supersedes those provisions of the Land Development Code that are in conflict with it. It's a component of the Land Development Code. It's a zoning overlay.
Just like Gray...
Sort of like superzoning for that neighborhood. But it's a part of the Land Development Code, and the Beach Activities Ordinance specifically preempts any other conflicting ordinance.
And that is, that's a legislative finding of a Board of County Commissioners.
Yes, sir.
And the only way that can change is, the board has got to make that change.
Legislative decision.
And a lot of times, we do that when we have at the end of the season type of discussions and what have you, to make those findings to correct what may have been a problem.
Well, one thing that's clear is everybody in South Walton that has a house down here is going to want to go to the beach. Everybody that stays at that house is going to want to go to the beach, and everybody has found some way to get there. Now, some larger developments have found ways to get to the beach too, and I think that is the biggest issue here. But let's say I have a lot that's 60 feet wide. I contract with 15 houses up the hill, because they're all managed by the same management company. And each one of those houses sleeps 20. That's 300 people on a 60-foot lot. Now, does that deal exist somewhere in Walton County? I'd pretty much put money that it does, because there's money laying on the ground to be picked up by beach vending. And we don't have any prohibition over making money. But again, my suggestion is this is much more complex than it appears. I think we can come up with some measure of intensity that we could recommend to the board through the Beach Activities Ordinance review, and that would be my recommendation as to when to do that.
Now, did you want something to say?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mac. And Commissioner Nipper, thank you for moving this forward. What I would suggest in one of two ways to get there. If we're, as the chairman says, going to meet after Labor Day, as we have for a number of years, to discuss what changes need to be made. If there is a...
If there is a means or method, be it an extensive conversation with each of you, with staff, particularly Mac, and what you would like to see, or some clear direction from this board perhaps at the next board meeting, which will be the last one before Labor Day, I believe, so that when we start that process, we're not starting green. We have an idea of where we're trying to go, and let's give staff a head start on, at that first meeting, being able to come back and say, "This is what you ask us to do in August, and this is where we say it's going." If it's adding some density allowance on the beach based on a number of bedrooms in a house, let's let staff, Mac and his staff know that, so that as they begin building these things together, they can start now as opposed to starting when we have that first meeting to bring those things together. So if that's a sit-down with each of you individually, I'm sure Mac would be happy to schedule that. If that's, be prepared at the next board meeting to offer those thoughts and ideas for consensus from the board so that we know when we get to that time at that meeting past Labor Day, we know where we're starting from. Is that... Mac, is that reasonable and help you in your efforts?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Can we do both?
We can do every...
Mac, come to CSM, we're talking.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, my only, what I wanted to do knowing I was leaving was just bring this up to the table. I think Inlet Beach knows this is not, this is something we do like religiously every year at the same time, but at least it's being brought to the forefront because now it's coming, it's coming to a head. I mean, the emails from March were horrendous, and if that's one property and it's happening all over, it's, we're just going to, everyone else is going to get inundated. So, I mean, I'm good with at least addressing it in a future date.
All right. Well, why don't we do, as Mr. Jones said, let's think about it, Mac, and whomever you feel is necessary, meet with us individually, we'll get those ideas so we can move forward at the next board meeting at the end of the month. Okay?
Sounds like a point.
That work? So the idea would be, Mac will reach out to each of you in the next two weeks to get your ideas, kind of formulate those, and bring them back at the next board meeting and say, "This is what I gathered, you know, I need consensus on which ones you want us to put our efforts into to move forward." So would that be your understanding?
Excuse me?
Yeah.
To move forward to the beach meeting in October?
That's correct. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, Mac, according to the development order on residents, is it parking spots or bedrooms? Because you can turn and, you can put an amor in a room and turn it into a bedroom. So, excuse me, is it parking spots or bedrooms?
It's based on the number of bedrooms.
Okay.
And that's where the parking comes from.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Got consensus from the board and move forward in that direction? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mac. All right. Next up is public comment. If anybody wishes to speak at this time, just, okay, I say a couple of names, so I'm going to start with a striped shirt here, back there, is that Mr. Jaffe? Is that who it is? Okay. Gentlemen on the right, and Philip, I see him. So we'll take you, please observe the clock up front, please. All right, go ahead, I need you to identify yourself and spell your last name.
Okay. Michael Scher, S-C-H-E-R. So first of all, I want to thank you all for the dialogue. I want to particularly thank Commissioner Nipper for bringing this up. I also, he's out of the room. I actually want to thank Mac for his research and presentation. I learned a few things. While I did appreciate what he put forth, there's a couple of things I didn't agree with. Number one was, you know, Mac said that there was, what Mac said was in conflict, it isn't the beach ordinance that exempts a business, it's actually the land code. So if there is some separation, you can't exempt a beach vending from being a business in one place or not, because it's actually in the land code, section 1.13.13, that exempts the business. So I'm not entirely sure or agree that the beach ordinance supersedes the land code. There's definitely no evidence for that. That said, I do appreciate the discussion as it relates to limiting some of the density issues, and I think the, you know, the board is, you know, I do appreciate that. There was one other thing that said that 210 Winston Lane, I believe someone said that there are 25 sets that it was allowed for, okay? Routinely, in busy times, there are 75, 80 sets there, so way more than 25. 25 is a light day if... So, but with that, you know, it's, however we get to the density issue, I think is really important. So if we can be part of that conversation, we'd love to be part of that conversation, but being able to, whether, and I happen to be the president of Barbary Coast, right, Contradina, that Mac was, so, you know, we try to maintain, you know, proper density as well on our beach, and so with that, if we can get this to a point where we are tying this and not overriding our beaches, because otherwise, if you're allowing, because I think beach vending is good for Walton County. I like beach vending, I think it's quaint, I think it adds character, but if you're beach vending on private residentially zoned property to the public, that is a violation of our zoning, and we can't on one side say, "Hey, we have this residential zoning," yet it's a slippery slope if we're going to not honor that zoning. So thank you very much for taking up this topic.
All right, very well. All right, Mr. Jaffe, I think you're next. Who? No. Philip, hang on. He raised his hand before you did. Mr. Jaffe, come forward if you're going to speak.
Rich Jaffe.
No. Push it down right now.
How about now? There we go. I'm representing the Historic Inlet Beach Neighborhood Association, and we definitely want to thank Commissioner Nipper for her assistance in trying to deal with this issue. It's been going on for quite a while. In fact, I first raised the issue three years ago when we became aware of what was going on here. To some degree, I disagree with Mac when he says it's very complex. I understand the complexity, but it's also very simple. What you have at 210 Winston is a commercial operation in a residential neighborhood, period. That's what it's zoned for. It's a house. It's not a business. They have been running a business there, and it's not just the point, it's rent gear here. They have a permit to do that. But going to what Mac said about the other issues on Barbary property and that sort of thing, and they have permits for eight sets and what have you, that's different. As you just heard the numbers from Mike Scher, the numbers at 210 Winston have been huge. It's not providing chairs and umbrellas for a handful of people who happen to rent your home. That's entirely different. This is a business. Something else that just came up that I have to point out, you're laboring under some very bad information. The issue came up that Inlet Beach has a neighborhood plan, and that supersedes and overlays the other issues. Well, I'm here to tell you, I thought so too, and it doesn't, because we passed amendments last year to our neighborhood plan that deal with parking and issues contained with construction and how many residents can rent, park on the streets, and you have to provide parking for your residents on your property. And we have gone now repeatedly to the sheriff's office and to code enforcement, and both of those entities have told us, "We're not going to enforce your regulations." Sheriff's office told us, "It's a code issue." Code has told us, "We're not going to enforce it because we can't figure out, well, who might belong to that vehicle." Well, you know how you do that. You walk up to the house and you go, "Hey, is that yours? Can you move it, please?" We thought we had regulations in place to handle those things. They don't, because no one will enforce our regulations, which you all passed and the state passed. In addition to that, one last thing. Every year, you've talked about when we come to those beach meetings, kicking the can down the road, not wanting to do that, not wanting to end up at the end or the beginning of the season in February trying to pass regulations about beaches. There have been no meetings about the vendors. I'm going to read to you for just a second, and I'm going to run out of time, but please allow me the time. This is from Brian Kellenberger. "Due to the COVID issues, the sub-advisory committees have decided not to meet in July and April and therefore have not undertaken the process as we normally would. I doubt we will meet in September, and therefore we will not have any viable code revision recommendations to offer for review by the TDC or the Board of County Commissioners."
Will say, thank you. Philip?
First and foremost, just want to address with you guys about the point. So we are the vendor there, Rent Gear Here, I'm the owner of Rent Gear Here. We did service the point 100%. That's not a fallacy. We did service them, and they advertised to their guests, guess what? Go to the public beach access at 210 Winston Lane. If you want chairs, those guys will serve you. Mac and his team let us know that that was a violation from the development code and said, "We can't do that anymore." Immediately, we stopped doing that. We moved all of their guests, they arranged a shuttle, they go to Orange Street now. All the people that we do service at 210 Winston Lane are guests, residents from that area. I'm definitely not denying that we service people that are in that area. We do not service the point people, and the point does not send people to us and advertise that. When Mr. Mac speaks about the violations for this code board hearing next week, what I would say to Mr. Mac, and he's been very great to work with and very kind, is, "Is there any violation currently taking place with the point that you see that they are advertising people?"
Philip?
Yes, sir.
Director comments.
Very sorry. And I mean that with all due respect. But the answer, and I've emailed all of you, is the answer is, no, there's not any violations. And that's why I've reached out multiple times saying, "Why is there a code board meeting?" We did everything that the board asked, we did everything that Mr. Mac asked very politely. So I just want you guys to know, the point didn't mean any ill will. They're sending people to a public beach access. We in turn tell them, "Do not do that. We serve you at Orange Street, which is a public beach." So we're doing that. Here's the next thing. Y'all are going to think I'm crazy, because most of our complainants are Barbary Coast, right? I'm the biggest fan of Barbary Coast going to enjoy their beach with a beach vendor. Yes, you, Mr. Mac is correct, they do not own that beach. They're doing the exact same thing that we are doing. I took this picture, all these red and blue umbrellas that you see here, those are beach chairs and umbrellas that are not us, probably 20 or 30 of them, that are in front of those four parcels for their guests to enjoy the beach. What you guys need to understand very politely is that we are a tourist destination. There are 22 lots in Barbary Coast that use four Gulffront parcels, they're all nice, beautiful, big homes that sleep 10, 20, 30 people. They all come here and they pay my mortgage, and everyone else's mortgage so they can take a vacation. And what do they want to do? They want to go sit on the beach. Y'all know me well enough, I've been doing this eight years now, that I take very high pride in what I do, in doing it with character and doing it with great ethics. Any of you have ever asked me to do anything, I do it. I support Barbary Coast's right to have beach vendors, because they should be able to enjoy the beach, just like we should. I don't recommend putting a limit per house, because I think that's greatly going to hurt tourism, but I just want to do the right thing for you guys, and I want to support y'all, our neighbors at Barbary Coast. I'm here to be an advocate for everybody.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Mac, did you, you showed me a piece of paper. Do you want to discuss it or not?
Yeah, you want to wait. We've got two up on Zoom that want to...
Oh, okay. Hang on, Mac. We've got a couple up here that... All right, Randy Sims, can you hear me? Randy Sims?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Might have to speak up a little bit, but identify yourself, spell your last name.
Hear me now?
Go ahead.
Hear me okay?
Go ahead.
Okay. I am one of the owners of the beachfront in Barbary Coast, and I am completely confused after Mac's presentation. I don't understand what he's saying, and he left a little bit of the history out. I bought my lot out of foreclosure, it's a private residence, unlike what the Jackson's property guy just said. I, we don't rent to anybody, and we're only using our vendor for the Barbary Coast. But now, is he saying that Barbary Coast is invalid? Is he saying that the easement is invalid? Because that throws a whole different light on both my property and the property next to us, and as well as it goes to title companies, it goes to the sales of the real estate that sold it to me, the prior owners. The prior owners actually went into foreclosure. So what am I, what is he saying? And do I need to hire an attorney and show up for the code board? Or what? Because I own this piece of property, and there is an easement on it. If that easement is invalid, I'm very interested in that.
Okay, Mac will be up here in just a sec.
I'm confused, completely confused by what he said, and I would like to see proof of everything that he's saying, because it directly affects my piece of property.
Okay.
And you've got meats and bounds, you've got title companies, you've got real estate agents, you've got prior owners, and you had a foreclosure that he completely left out in the history.
Okay. Randy, I'm going to recommend that tomorrow, you call Mac at his office and let him go into it, because it's a very lengthy discussion going to take place. Would that work for you, to just call him tomorrow and let him go through what he presented tonight?
It will, but I would also like to point out that it's clear, as clear as it can be, that this was a retaliatory research to try to hurt Barbary Coast and deflect...
Well, I don't know if... If you feel that way, Mr. Sims, I'm sorry, but I asked him to research everything down there to find out where it's at, because I didn't know all the details myself, but if you...
Well, what did he just say? Did he say that the easement is invalid and Barbary Coast is invalid?
Hang on, I'll let him get up here and answer that for you.
Matt Carver for the Planning Department. What I said, I did not say the easement was invalid. It's an easement between two private parties. It's recorded in public records. What I did say was, the easement wasn't approved by the Board of County Commissioners to provide a beach club for Barbary Coast. That's what I said. That should have been done by development order, just like the point should have done theirs by development order, approved by the appropriate authority of the county. That's what hasn't been done. I didn't say the easement was invalid. I said the purpose of the easement was not approved by the county commission.
Okay, thank you, Mac. You can still reach out to him tomorrow if you'd like, and if you want to go into further detail. Okay? Next up is Rick Merriman. No, Merriam, Rick Merriam, if I pronounce that right.
Yeah, it's Merriam, like the dictionary. Can you hear me?
Got you. Go ahead, spell your last name for the clerk. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Okay, rental gear. I own 209 Winston Lane, right across the street from 210 Winston Lane. Rental gear actually parks their cars in a non-parking zone to set up every one of these sets, whatever you want to call them, umbrellas, chairs, et cetera. We have never, not one time, has our neighborhood complained about anything, and that's Barbary Coast, okay? But now you get this point coming in here, and you get this rental gear people coming here and blocking all the traffic of coming in and out of there, and Randy Sims hit it on the nail on the head the last two times, it's going to be some... hit it on the, the nail on the head the last two times. It's going to be some child, mom, dad, whatever, is going to die because of the traffic that the point is pushing down there. They also have a, an advertisement thing for the point leaning up against the house that no one is in. So I thought we had this cleared, that they were not allowed to do this the last time. But here we go, pushing it off again for another month. And I have renters myself that have said, there's 20 to 30 college kids flipping off police and, and, and making loud noises. And, and when the police go down there, they say, well, there's nothing we can do. They flip them off and then they run. So I, I mean, you know, I bought this place and built our own house there as an investment. The point clearly said when they built that point that they were gonna direct their traffic to the public beach access right down the street, which would be great. But they don't do it. So what's gonna happen when a child dies? That's a question. Can someone answer?
Anybody want to answer?
Chairman.
Oh, we don't have any further comment on that.
Well, can you do something then? Can you do something? Has Mr. Sims, or Mr. Hart, or Mr. Stoops ever complained about too many umbrellas or non-social distancing? No. It's only at that property. So nobody can police it. But when I'm on my beach or their beach, whoever's beach, Barbary Coast, I have an access, I've got a, got a fireman lady that's gonna come up to me and tell me I'm in the wet sand.
Okay.
And I'm clearly on dry sand. So.
All right. Rick, your time is up.
We need some help.
Okay, Rick.
We need some help.
Point taken. Thank you. All right. I don't see any more. So we'll close this part of the, on public comment. Let's take about 10 minute break, and then we'll get back into planning and development services. We stand in recess.
We have is the Micro Mobility Moratorium Extension. This is a first reading of a proposed ordinance extending the moratorium on micro mobility devices until April 30th, 2021. It's simply an extension due to the COVID-19 delays.
All right. What's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion. A second and a public comment. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries. Thirty-nine.
Next item is a series of comprehensive plan amendments. This would also be first reading of those.
Hang on a minute, Mac. Did we miss one? Number 38?
I'm sorry.
Signing agreement?
Sorry. I've, I've marked it up. Sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm reading out the planning agenda. We do have one item that was at the beginning here. Number 38. This is a request to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the agreement for services provided by Kajit Inc. for Wi-Fi hardware and shared data plan to be used on the go-all transit bus system.
Okay. Any questions?
Approve.
Second.
A second. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries. Okay. Now we can go ahead.
Now we can go to the comprehensive plan amendments. I'm gonna ask Kristin Schell to briefly describe those for you.
All right.
Amendment first, right? These are final adoption, both of these. So these, they've already been to the state for review. And this, the map amendment is the Woodlawn Industrial Park Future Land Use Map Amendment. We did make one change at the request of Eglin, that we will consider the tricariat, small area study in the case that we look at future industrial sites, not this one in the text amendment. So that's the only change since the last time you saw it since Transmetal. So the first item is the actual future land use element or future land use map and zoning map change for that area in its final adoption.
What's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion. Second, any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries.
Chairman?
I reverse the order.
Kristin, Mac, and Bill, thank you very much for including Eglin. That really means a lot for pilots, I'm telling you.
They don't have a choice.
I just thank you.
But yeah.
For controlling the lighting when, when we're flying.
Yeah. The, the, the other, I reversed the order. I'm sorry. I got a little distracted. So the future land use map amendments that you, or the text amendment that you have here is also final adoption. That's the one that has the change from Eglin, at Eglin's request that we recommend. And this is the text amendment that allows us to have industrial land uses in other areas of the county where we couldn't have them. So these two are companions. This is final.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. One last comment on the comp plan text amendment. That allows us to apply the industrial future land, or industrially extracted future land use district within the opportunity zone, which is north of Highway 98. So that helps the opportunity zone also.
All right. Very well.
The next two items are quasi judicial in nature, so will need to be sworn.
Counsel? It's you, Heather.
Okay. Anybody that's gonna be offering testimony on these quasi judicial items, if you'd please rise, raise your right hand so I can swear you in. You solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give in these proceedings will be the truth and nothing but the truth. Thank you.
Okay, Mac.
Our first QJ item is the La Bella Vita Estates Platte. It's requested approved by final plat.
Mr. Chairman, could I interrupt just briefly?
You will, if you must.
Heather, did you ask for, if we've had any?
Yes, sir. Did any of the commissioners have any ex parte communications regarding any of these QJ items?
Nope.
Nope.
Thank you. Getting late, I understand.
We're all delirious.
Been here since 3 o'clock, 3:30. Hi, Mac.
This is a, a plat on behalf of Jody Farb requesting approval to plat seven lots with a retention pond on approximately 2.33 acres, future land use of residential and zoning district, community neighborhood infill. It's located at 208 North Wall Street and identified by the parcel number in your package. This one is, the appropriate fees have been paid, subject to the recording fee at the point of recording, but it's ready to go.
Okay. Does the applicant wish to make any comments? Come on up, sir.
Darryl Burgess with Emerald Coast Associates, B-U-R-G-I-S. I don't really have any further comments. I agree with staff's recommendation, but only if you have any questions.
Any question for Mr. Burgess? Seeing none? Thank you. What's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is the Seagrove East Townhomes Platte. This is a request to approve the final plat. It was prepared, or submitted on behalf of Emerald Coast Associates, on behalf of Seagrove East Partners, requesting approval to plat seven townhome units on approximately 0.84 acres with the future land use of mixed use and zoning category of village mixed use. It's previously approved by development order. The developer has paid the appropriate fees, subject to the recording fee at point of recording, and it's ready for your final approval.
Any questions for Mac? Seeing none, the applicant wish to come forward. I got a questions.
Oh, Darryl Burgess again with Emerald Coast Associates, B-U-R-G-I-S. And again, we agree with staff recommendation. And if you have any questions.
And looking at your layout of those seven lots.
Yes, sir.
Where's the water going? Stormwater?
It's, I believe this isn't, now, mind you, I'm not a civil engineer. I believe it's exfiltration.
Is that what it is?
So it's under the road.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. I just didn't see any holding ponds in there.
No, it's, it's exfil. All right.
All right. Any other questions? Any public comment? Seeing none, what's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve. Second.
A motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries.
Thank you, sir. That's all we have.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank you.